I think I'm okay. Steve, have you drank the water?
We have, uh, we have some water here and. See, we're here. Hello?
Hi.
We have a special guest this evening.
I see. Love it. All right, Chris Peray is calling me, so I'm gonna add him in.
Okay.
I don't listen to the tapes, so I can vote.
Hey Roger, this is Jim Reese. It's good to see you, buddy. Looking good.
Okay.
Hey Jim, how you doing? Back in the saddle.
You back? Can't keep you down for long.
No. He's a fighter.
Wanna see my scars?
No, we're not, uh, we're not showing scars or any kind of... Ah, there's Susan. She's part of the public, I think. She's going downstairs.
Everyone, this is Cynthia. I'm still showing up as Miranda, um, as Miranda number two. But, uh, I'm gonna leave my video off because it's easier to stream.
And is that you, Linda, who called in?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. And Chris Peray is also on the phone.
Do you have Karen Blakemore yet? We sure do.
Here.
Awesome. I, I'm not, I'm not ready to take role. I'm just kinda filling in my notes here. As a heads up, uh, Stephanie Herring's not attending tonight. She reached out to me, uh, today and said that she was gonna take a few days off. It was kind of a hard start with all the events that are going on. Is, uh, Trista Taylor joining us for the latter part of the meeting?
Yes.
Awesome. And do we have Billy Giblin yet?
Yeah, he's on.
Oh, yay.
Yeah, man.
Okay.
Hey, everybody.
Awesome.
Hey, Roger.
We bore him, so I think if Miranda's ready and you're ready, Steve, I'm ready whenever you guys are.
Excellent.
Yep, we're recording, so you are good to go.
Well, you're good to go. Okay. Cynthia, lead play.
Sure. Planning Commission meeting is called to order on March 24th, 2020 at 7:02 PM. Roll call. Chair Williams.
Uh, here.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Here.
Commissioner Cornell.
Here.
Not used to that yet, Roger. Commissioner Giblin?
Here.
Commissioner Glasser?
Here.
Commissioner Peray?
Here.
And Vice Chair Reese?
Present.
Awesome.
No, no Stephanie?
No, she, uh, reached out to me earlier in the day and said that they were gonna go out of town. She was, uh, just kind of was overwhelmed with all the events that have gone on with the shooting in Atlanta and Boulder.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Cynthia. Um, so first item up on the agenda, the... Is the approval of minutes from February 24th, uh, Planning Commission meeting. Does anyone have any, uh, comment or corrections to the minutes?
Hey, um, yeah, this is Billy, um, Billy Giblin, um. Yeah, I just have one thing. I looked through it pretty, uh, carefully and seems to be one thing missing that, that seemed, seems, um... Clear that it's significant. There was, uh, a threat of litigation and, and it seems like it would be in town's interest that that be noted, um... In the note, in, in the minutes, you know, um... I just feel like the town's better protected. There was litigation in the future to have this on public record and when this was first threatened and, uh, just seems a good, uh, thing to... Make note of and put on public record. I think it would be in and around page eight of 10 there, the third paragraph down where it starts with, um, Attorney Madsen. I think that's approximately where it happened. It's my opinion, or that's, that's what I believe, because I think it seems significant.
Billy, okay, well, that certainly, um, it certainly did happen.
Jennifer, did, did you wanna weigh in on that? Uh, is she with us yet?
I, I am here. I think that, um, that there needs to be a motion to amend the minutes. Um, I don't, I don't have any... I mean, if that's the desire to have the minutes amended to reflect that, then there needs to be a motion.
Okay, I was sort of waiting until we hear anything else. Anybody else have any comments? Okay. Having heard none, um, so Billy, would you like to make that motion since you brought it up?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we include, um, a note about the threat of litigation that happened during the February 24th, um, meeting. By the applicant, Mitchell.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I'll make a second.
I think Roger's second.
Gotcha. Yep, I get that. We're gonna do a roll call vote.
Well, can we have discussion?
Down the list here. Oh, sorry.
Okay, any other, any other discussion first?
Hi, this is Karen Blakemore. Um, Billy, can you tell me where that is in the minutes?
Well, we're, it isn't, and approximately where, uh, you know, I believe it would be in and around the third paragraph on page eight of 10 that starts with Attorney Madsen.
Page eight?
Yeah, well, it's page eight of the, of the minute, probably page, well, page 10 of the, you know, packet.
Okay.
Very helpful. Thank you, Billy.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to say, I think, uh, if staff could actually... I don't actually remember the moment. Oh, I know I don't, because I was still struggling to get online. Um, well, may, maybe I was online. Um... Just that Cynthia would verify the conversation, actually document exactly what happened, or at least, you know, record... The sequence and verify that that actually happened, and then we would add that to the minutes. But, but let's make sure that Billy was a threat there. It sounds like Billy is accurate, so maybe a verification would be good before we actually change the minutes. So I'm sure Cynthia could check that out.
So, sure, sure. I'll, I'll, I'll review that and, and try to make the language as consistent to what went on as, as possible and add that in.
So, so this is, this is Jennifer Madsen. So there's a, a motion on the floor right now. Is, is the motion withdrawn?
I, I don't.
Motion in a second.
I, uh, this is Karen Blakemore. I think we should modify the motion to say that we'll add in the words, the recording, um, related to, uh, a lawsuit. Something like that.
Verify the recording.
Right, verify the recording.
Elaborate. You, I mean, like...
I think someone needs to listen to the recording of the meeting and then to transcribe those words into the minutes.
You might, you might wanna consider not approving the minutes, not adopting them right now, and let, let Cynthia do that and then bring them back. So you can review them before you approve them.
Yes, definitely.
That sounds good.
All right, then, um, then I guess...
So these will be coming back to, I believe, April 28th?
Okay. All right, sounds good. Any other discussion on the minutes?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. All right, Cynthia, thank you for looking into that, and we'll, um, review those again for, with the next packet.
Cynthia, in general, Cynthia, in general, is Billy. You do a great job of the minutes, you know, and you don't miss much. I just did notice that, note that one thing.
Okay, very good. All right.
Thanks, Billy. Appreciate that.
Moving on, is there anyone, um, on the, at the meeting that wishes to make any public comment on anything that's not on tonight's agenda?
This is Rick Henrickson. I have one thing.
Okay, go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, um, I think I mentioned at the last meeting that we had a couple fires related to wood stove ashes. One of our volunteers, Eric Abramson, put together a really good video on wood stove safety. It's currently up on our Facebook page, for those who have it. And it's also, hopefully, the next day or so will be up on our webpage as well. So just wanted to get that out there. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Rick. Okay, we'll put that, put that link into the, the minutes, Cynthia?
Sorry, I keep muting, so there's no noise. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other public comment not related to tonight's agenda? Okay. Having heard none, we'll move on to our action items. The, um, first one is the continuation of the public hearing to review use for paid parking in the Central Business District. Uh, who's going to present this from staff? Is this, um...
Miranda. Yep. Um, I'm sticking with it. I'm gonna introduce this item, and then I'll turn it over to Ron. All right, so, uh, as, as discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting, I'm really just gonna take off where we left off. So let me get to that slide. So in February, the Planning Commission had asked that the applicant come back and address the following. Uh, the applicant had agreed to remove the triple-decker parking, so the Planning Commission wanted to see that taken out of the site plan. There was a request to address the spaces in the town right-of-way, either by removing them completely or outlining in the agreement what that would look like. The applicant has removed those completely, and I'll go into that in a second. There was a request to expand on parking logistics, which is outlined in the narrative. Some additional comments about how the application meets the comprehensive plan. There was a request to identify how the applicant wanted to see the changes made to the SRU by staff versus the Planning Commission, and then also an annual review. So in your packet, you have this narrative document. So I met with the applicant, Ron Mitchell, and together worked with him to pull all the pieces that we believe the Planning Commission wanted additional feedback on. Um, so one thing, the Planning Commission had also asked is that the parking plan be reviewed by the Downtown Development Authority. So we did that. We brought all the applicant materials to their meeting on March 10th, and they actually did not feel that it was appropriate for them to weigh in on this application, and therefore offered no formal comments. As discussed, we removed the right-of-way parking spaces, so those have been moved all onto the applicant's property. The applicant wanted to provide some clarification about timeline for implementation. So there is an initial phase that occurs months four through five, um, which we've kind of overviewed, which has a lot of attendant oversight, and that's in the parking logistics. Then from six months to two and a half years, the applicant will work on doing a phased approach of, of implementing the kiosks and the meters, and so those will be installed over a two-year period. With the goal of being fully implemented by year three. So I won't go over kind of the logistics of the parking, but in here you see that it's broken down by how the initial plan will work versus how it works once there's kiosk and meters. And then some more information on how the enforcement piece works. The applicant noted that in the comprehensive plan, not only does this application speak to the need for parking, but it also really focuses on helping businesses. And the applicant highlighted the, the need to really generate revenue through visitors and how turnover parking can help both the customers and the community, clients and visitors, because there will be more revenue earned, um, with more people visiting the town. The applicant noted that he, he's seeking for any changes that are 25% or less, that that be done by staff. And so we provided an example of what that would be, which is looking at the total, uh, space count of 105. If, say, a building was demolished, that's one of his buildings, and he wanted to be able to put parking on that lot. If it was less than 26 spaces, the 25% of the total plan, that that could be done with staff, and then anything over that would go to the Planning Commission for approval. There was originally a request by the Planning Commission to have an annual review. The applicant is happy to come back and provide an informal update, um, about what's going on with the plan, but he does not want there to be a formal review that would result in the Planning Commission making additional conditions that would be added to the SRU. So it would be, uh, more of an informational item than an actual action item before the Planning Commission. And I do apologize, I sent you the SRU this evening, but there are a couple updates to that as well that I want to just draw your attention to. So the first is that we outlined how that 25% would work in the SRU agreement that would allow the town zoning administrator to, along with town staff, to accept any changes and modify the SRU. It would be up to the zoning administrator, though, to determine if there is more than 25% or the request is something that would need to be reviewed by the Planning Commission. The SRU also provides an overview of that timeline. Now, there, the applicant has requested that there's an understanding that extensions may be needed to the timeframe. So what we have outlined in this SRU is that the zoning administrator can do two extensions, and that if a third extension is needed, it would have to go to the Board of Trustees. You will note as well that the applicant did request that the item H here, the applicant must at all times meet the requirements related to noise, odor, and sound, be taken out. The applicant has expressed concern about the spillover from other businesses and that negatively impacting him and his business of paid parking. You know, that there's concern about not being able to control what might happen in a different establishment. So that, those are the major changes to the SRU. And I will go, I mean, just go back to the site plan really quick. So on the site plan, you will see that the triple-decker parking has been removed, and there are just parking spaces there. These purple boxes to the north of, uh, Ubon are bike racks. And then, as you can see, there, anywhere that there was parking to just the west of Ubon, there were a series of spots that were partially on the sidewalk. Those have been removed, and the ones to the east of the Animal Hospital have moved in so that nothing is on the town right-of-way. And Ron, I'm gonna turn it over to you to add anything else you might have, you and your team. Ron, you might be on mute if you're there.
Yeah, I had a little trouble getting unmuted. Uh, I have nothing to add. Thank you very much, uh, Miranda, for doing that, and I'm just open for questions.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Miranda and Ron. Uh, we'll go first around to the, uh, members of the Planning Commission to see if they have any questions before we, uh, open it up to the public comment. Okay, anyone have any, any Planning Commission members have any questions for Ron or Miranda? Steve, I have one. You, you have a question, Roger? Okay.
For the two parking spots there on, by the Animal...
Animal Hospital.
On Second Street and the corner of Snyder. There is like five parking spot, or there are actually two there to back out onto the street. Parking spots.
Yes, there are.
Okay.
So there's a total of five?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, all right. Any other questions from Planning Commission members at this time?
Hi, this is Karen Blakemore. I have a couple.
Okay, go ahead, Karen.
For Miranda, um, in the agreement, uh, I'm wondering if we need to have time limit, limits on the extensions. So, and I could see doing it as, um, one month for the first extension, uh, first phase, six months for the second, and one year for the third? Or maybe one year total extension? But, but the way it reads right now, those extensions could be any length of time.
If that's a desire of the Planning Commission to put timeframes on that, um, that's definitely something that you could do. You are correct, there currently, it stands that editing point applicant could come forward to request that extension. The applicant, of course, would need to clarify how much longer he was looking for, um, but it could be enacted at any point with how it currently reads.
So I wonder what the other commissioners think about that, having a, uh, maximum, uh, uh, timeframe for the extensions. Currently, it goes to three years total for completion.
This is Jim Reese. I would agree that it would be reasonable to put some kind of a hard timeline in there so that it doesn't extend to a six-year project.
Okay, do we, um, any response from Ron and his team?
I don't object to it. I mean, there's always unforeseen circumstances, and reasonable people come to reasonable conclusions. So, uh, if you say a, uh, three months or six months or whatever, uh, you feel is reasonable, uh, I'm agreeable to that. I don't, I don't have any intent at this point to not be able to meet the, uh, requirement to be finished and at the time for, uh, required. But, uh, who knows? Big snowstorms come, fires, floods, you never know. But I'm not adverse to the suggestion.
Oh, okay. Well, I'd like to propose that we limit it to four years total. Project.
This is Jennifer Madsen. I think it would be important to know what happens if the project isn't completed in the four years. Is the, is the special review use permit then withdrawn?
I think...
Have to come forth again.
I think there's something in here about the Board of Trustees.
Couldn't, um, they, uh, Jennifer, Attorney Madsen, couldn't they come forth for an amendment to the agreement? Like, uh, Kiraboo Ridge has done? Wouldn't it be something along that line? And it would have to be approved by the Planning Commission and by the Board. Uh, no, I think it only has to be approved by the Board of Trustees.
There's nothing in, in, um, let me see, I'm looking over this quickly. So this, that could be, um, could be classified as a violation of the agreement, which is specified under paragraph four. And the reason I bring it up is because you can decide what you are recommending in terms of modifying, um, the special review use agreement, and I think that's important. If you wanna have a time limit, what's the consequence of failing to meet that time limit? And so there's a lot of different things that could happen. Um, one is that it could be a violation under paragraph four. And then in that, in the violation, then it does go to the Board of Trustees.
I, I think going to the Board of Trustees would be appropriate. In the, um, the area that I'm talking about adding that, um, maximum timeframe to, it does discuss going to the Board of Trustees if the applicant requests more than three extensions. So could, I'm wondering if we could fit it in, in there.
Okay. I, if, if it's the desire of the Planning Commission to add this in, and maybe, um... There should be a motion to amend this SRU agreement. I'd need to know the terms specifically that you stated, Commissioner Blakemore.
Okay, I would like to amend the draft SRU agreement, um, to have a limit of four years on completion of the project. If it's not completed within four years, um, we must obtain approval from the Board of Trustees. I'm trying to read, read the wording right here. Um, if, because it, there's a... If the applicant requests a third extension on the timeframes or, um, fails to complete the project within four years, um... the applicant must obtain approval from the board of trustees to continue with the project. And the board of trustees may impose a cessation on the operations of the paid parking use while the applicant completes the paid parking plan.
I will agree to that.
Okay, so if there's agreement, then
Go ahead, Jim.
I was just providing a second.
Okay, so should we put this in the list and then do one vote at the end for any other changes to the SRU?
That, that works.
Separate them.
That works with the, with the applicant agreeing to, yes, that would work.
Okay, I'm thinking that might be simpler to just sort of put it into a list and then, because there may be some others. Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any other additional comments on the SRU or questions before we go to the public comment?
Yes, this is Jim Reese. I had a question, there was a portion in there on page 15, I believe it is, under heading three, that says meets all requirements of section 16-52. And then it goes down below it into the things that are not met. And it says that the utility, electrical utility needs of the kiosks have not been identified, that there's some egress orientation changes and signage that needs to be updated, and that there's not been any documentation received by the staff about property that the applicant says he has written consent to purchase from other property owners involved in this proposal, which he is the sole option for the applicant. So of those three issues there that seem unresolved, the one that was curious to me was the option to buy property that is involved in this project. And I just wanted to understand that a little better. Is what happens if something falls through in that option, Mr. Mitchell, for, for you, if somebody backs out and says, you know, I'm not going to sell you this property, does it like impact the, the whole project? You won't be able to move forward?
Well, of course, they've signed an agreement, they're anxious for me to buy it. They've asked if I would speed up the purchase, and I've told them this is a pending item. And if it comes out well for me, well, I probably could speed up the purchase. They were very gracious to give me the option, and they understood exactly why I wanted it. And should it fall through, I would think that just the parking on that property would be eliminated, which is the vet clinic. So you would just, it would not be part of the, the project. But I have every intention of buying it. And, but I think that's a good question, and I hope I've answered it to your satisfaction.
Well, let me direct my next question about that to the staff. Of these three issues that are not met, are any of those considered serious or red flags for the staff or for Attorney Madsen?
Oh, Jim, I might want to interject here. This is Karen. The, the property purchase, I believe, is in the SRU agreement.
Right, but I think the question is what happens if that falls through and it's in the SRU?
Well, I guess we could put a clause in there. Again, this is up to you guys, I'm not giving you advice. But my suggestion would be that if it falls through, that those parking spaces are eliminated because they would then not be under the SRU.
Right, so the question is, do we have to do anything legally on that, should this change and consequently change the SRU, maybe Attorney Madsen?
I guess it really depends on the timeframe. It sounds like, Mr. Mitchell, you're saying that this purchase of the property won't happen until after you get approval for the SRU agreement?
Should the SRU not be approved, I would purchase it anyway.
Okay, but will you know about the purchase? Will you have ownership of the property before the SRU agreement or before the SRU application is approved before the board of trustees?
No, I won't. I don't plan to purchase it until next year.
Okay, okay, then yes, definitely, we should add a clause in the special review use agreement that calls out the situation.
Okay, well, let's, let's add that to the list then. Jim, did you get everything else answered from staff on these other issues?
Well, let me ask one more question. First off, I want to say to Mr. Mitchell and your team, I appreciate this, the revisions you've done. Looks like you've worked hard to meet the needs of the town staff and work with Chris, and all the issues, you've done a really good job of addressing, in my opinion. And your new parking plan map looks much cleaner and easier to understand. Is there, this is to the staff, does the staff, any of the staff listening here, whether it be Chris or Miranda or anybody else, have any concerns or issues with the latest version of the plan that aren't jumping to the forefront that you would want to tell us at this time?
Chris Paulsier is not here, but in talking to him earlier, he does not have any concerns. I, I don't have any concerns either, and I'll let Cynthia chime in too. To answer your questions about the electrical, though, obviously, when building permits are pulled, that'll all be sorted out at that piece. You know, originally, we had talked about the permitting for the triple-decker parking. That's no longer the case here, but permits will still be needed for the kiosks that need their electrical components. So we feel confident that that'll all be handled. The code then, and the applicant is well aware of the need for extensive signage. We've talked in detail about making sure that areas are properly noticed for one-way delivery, how to park in the lot, whether it's back-end or front-end parking. So I do feel confident that the applicant will be addressing that as, once it's been approved and we know what the lots are, having those properly signed. Cynthia, do you have anything else to add?
I would like to, go ahead, sorry, I didn't mean to.
Oh, you're fine, Ron. I don't really have anything else to add. I would only just say that I just want to be conscious about spaces that are going to bump right up creek. I asked with Ron about that before, and just the consideration of trying to pull him a little bit farther away from the riparian zone, if it's possible to do. That would be lovely, because he's got some of those that are just right up there, right at the edge of the property line. And then, you know, I just kind of want to be, be, be mindful. Oh, sorry, I was looking down below. He bumped them back, but just, just kind of a consideration of the creek and trying to keep, keep riparian area healthy. Two percent of Colorado's landmass, so they're pretty robust, diverse areas. And just want to make sure that that's thought of, like with the trash and recycling area and whatnot. That's all I would really have to add.
This is Karen Garrity, town administrator. I just wanted to chime in and support what Miranda said, that the town staff has found that working with the applicant, the applicant has been very responsive. We don't have any major concerns, as Jim is asking about. And we do feel that the applicant has responded to every single one of the concerns that were issued by the planning commission. So thank you very much.
I would like to add that the kiosks are all solar-powered with battery backup in the event the solar isn't there. So I don't think there's any, going to be any major electrical work needed from any of the normal infrastructure of the power grid. Thank you.
Okay, Jim, anything else?
No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Roger, do you have a question?
Which is the property that we're talking about, number three there? Which is the property that we're talking about possibly being marked?
The vet clinic.
The vet clinic, right there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions at this time before we go to the public?
Steve, this is Karen. Again, I have a couple more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead, Karen.
So we've seen the letter from Holly Vickers, and she's the owner of Here by Holly. And she wrote about how she would be put out of the business without having parking that she could use, and that she's also concerned about her customers and the customers of the animal hospital. So, and I know that we, that the applicant has reserved spaces for the residences according to section 16202 of the municipal code. And that code also lays out parking that it should be reserved for businesses. And so I'm trying to understand why it would apply, you know, why we wouldn't have that requirement for this application. So I'm not sure who would answer that.
I, I got that letter from her also, and I called her and made a long explanation to her about how we planned to do this. And apparently, she was satisfied with that because I never got a return call. So if you want me to talk to her in person, I'll be glad to do that.
So, Ron, is it, so the way it'll work is that all the spaces except for the residential spaces will be paid parking? And then employees will have a card or tag or something on their car so they could park in any of the paid parking spaces? Is that the?
Yeah, there'll be some sort of identifying system. My druthers and Roger Cornell had an issue with this, is that the employees could park anywhere. And I think that's fine, because if somebody does, and this happens all the time in parking lots, particularly later on, when I don't have supervision, heavy-duty in-person supervision, I expect it to happen. So I would give the employees a lot of latitude to be able to park anywhere because to run those businesses and have those businesses be effective, they got to get to work on time, and they can't be fooling around with somebody parked in a busy, dangerous parking space. So I think she apparently didn't have any worries about this after I had called her. So there are spaces designated for her business, but it doesn't mean that her employees or her customers have to park in those spaces.
Yeah, she mentioned needing to park close to the building because of the equipment that she brings in and out. And also, she noted emergency situations with animals that needed to get to the animal hospital quickly. And so she thought the parking should be next to the animal hospital. And she mentioned how there was already signs there saying that the parking is only for the businesses in that, that building. So
Well, right, those signs would be amended somewhat. And again, this is one of the, what I've said before, if we try something and it doesn't work, we try something else till we get it to work. So I'm pleased that you've allowed me that latitude, because then I can work directly with the merchants and optimize the parking for their benefit. That's the whole idea of having doing this.
Okay, okay, thanks for that answer. And then just one other thing, which isn't, is just related to this application, but it's not relevant to the approval or not. But the dining retail tent, that's right, that's so close to where cars are driving past it, and we have parking backing out into it. And will there be some sort of barrier between that tent and the parking lot so that cars won't drive into it?
Well, Rick Hendricks is on here, we could put some barriers like Blue Moon did during the pandemic for their restaurant, those are those concrete barriers that pretty hard to drive a car through, and you'll have a really wrecked car if you do.
That, that would be wonderful. That would be really great.
As long as Rick Hendricks approves of it, we're okay. But that tent was moved down to the property line to be sure that emergency vehicles could get around behind it from the accesses on Second Street. If Rick's okay with doing that, I'm okay with doing it.
Maybe when you bring that, that application to the planning commission, we can talk about it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank, thank you, Karen. Roger, do you have a question?
Yes. Well, just during the recent discussion, Ron, you just said that the animal hospital, the concerns, excuse me, it was the hairdresser, concerns she had. So you just stated that she's going to have designated parking. So are you going to have designated parking for her and her customer?
Sure, if she wants a designated space, I'll give it to her. And also, the Wings of Lace proprietor moves in a lot of merchandise almost all day long. So I'm not adverse at all in circumstances where the people really need it and want it, to give them what they want.
So you're going to have designated parking, there will be no parking meters at those spaces?
Well, if, look, if she's gone, I'm certainly going to let other people park there. Then we can, and we can post her hours, but
Okay, so you got it both ways, got it.
Okay.
Thank you. You want it both ways.
Okay.
Yes, I want it both ways. I want to maximize parking, Roger, and I think that does it.
Okay.
This is Billy. I guess that all seemed clear until last bit. So it seems kind of unclear, like if Wings of Lace shows up in the morning and someone's already parked there, that she can't park in her, it just seems kind of unclear how spots will be reserved at times and, you know, open for prepaid parking at other times. So, so that, I don't know, that just seems curious how that's actually going to work. And then also, I thought I heard last month, maybe the month before, that, that there was not going to be free parking for employees. That's, is that changing or, or did I hear that wrong? I actually read that, so I must have read it wrong too, but. So yeah, my two questions are, i- is it free parking for employees? You know, with this pass for it or not? And then how do you really get people out of that spot, reserved spot, in time for people to park there for their reserved hours?
You can do it with signage. You tell them it's reserved, and they can't park there. And if they do, they get towed out. I don't know if you've been on site or not, but I kind of like to put humor into some of my things. I have three trash cans there, and obviously, what it says on them is not going to happen, but it says, please don't park here on Mondays and Fridays, because if you do, your car will be disassembled and thrown away. And people laugh, and they get the idea, they understand that the dump truck or the truck is coming to pick up the trash. And 99% of the time, they laugh and they don't park there, and it works just fine. Once in, once in a while, there's Once in a, once in a while, there's somebody there and and that's one of the reasons we ask people to leave their car, come up and ask them to move. And occasionally, like this last uh, snowstorm, the truck can't even get in with two foot of snow on the ground. So they came the next day and somebody was parked in it and we ran around town, found out whose car it was. And an hour later, the trash truck came back and picked up the trash.
Okay, well, that makes sense. I mean, if you can put signs that are super clear, then then it seems like you could have have it both ways. And then and then so I guess what we just told Roger, so employees will be able to park, they'll have some kind of pass to park, you know, without paying to park, is that?
Employees are not gonna be charged to park at this point in time. Now, it uh, I don't want to charge them because I want them to be able to, for the businesses to prosper. If if the thing becomes a nightmare, and I don't think it will, but I'm not going to agree, then I won't charge them.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think I necessarily think we've put terms on that. I just mostly, it sounded like that plan had changed and I hadn't seen that. You know, from from when you talked about it before, so.
I I I have I answered your question?
Yeah, 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 thanks. Sorry, yes.
Hey, Billy, anything else?
Uh, I think that's everything right now, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll we'll be coming back for um, you know, for any further um, questions or comments and discussion anyway. So um, does anyone else have anything before we open it to the public?
This is Chris. Just wanted to make sure that all the letters that were written are put into the the SRU.
The, I'm I'm, you mean into the?
The letters and the letters and the emails that we all got, that that's part of the package.
I think, is that true?
It's kind of a good point. Th- this this month, we got the three that went out the day before the DDA meeting or the day of, but in months past, you know, some of those are just came as emails and never really made it into any of the packets, like for the long term.
But I thought they, the package for the board of trustees.
Oh, okay, that could be.
Is that, is that true? Miranda?
So if I'm understanding correctly, yes, if we get the like letters and enough time to put them in an agenda packet, we do. But when this goes to the board of trustees, it'll have components, it'll have all of the public comment received so far for the board of trustees to review. Is that what you're asking, Commissioner Gidlin?
Yeah, I think that's right. Chris was asking and I was agreeing with.
Yeah, so I was asking that.
Okay. Yeah, so you said there are the three tonight, and then any historical comments um, can be included in the board of trustees package.
Okay, very good. All right, do we have anyone from the? I'm sorry. Okay, um, do we have anyone from the, we'll now open it up for uh, public comment. Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this application? If so, uh, please state your name and address.
Uh, Kathleen Chaffey had sent in an email comments. She can't uh, verbally speak to it, so we typically read on her behalf. So I'll go ahead and do that.
Okay, please.
Yeah, Kathleen Chaffey, thirty-year resident East Magnolia, seventeen-year business owner. I feel the town should have never required an SRU from Mr. Mitchell. There is no change of use. Change of use should only occur when the property use is not zoned a use by right. This SRU requirement by town, Karen and Cynthia is more egregious than what occurred with the property on the corner across from the rock shop when the brain freeze people wanted to open an ice cream shop. Town ruined their simple retirement plans. There was owned retail restaurant under use by rights. Yes, it went from retail to food, however, they had a use by rights for either or. This is worse, in my opinion, because the land has been used for parking for decades. Ron making money off of fees off his commercial property is not something that should be up for debate by the town, in my opinion. Listen to yourselves. You are micromanaging someone else's property business, and in my opinion, this is not town's place. That's the end of the comments.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any, anything else? I don't think we have any public on. Is that correct, Miranda?
We actually have quite a bit, and there is a call-in user, so I would recommend the call-in user press star six if they want to comment. And I don't know if members of of Ron's team, like Lee or Peter Swift, have anything to add? Or Tom?
Hi, this is Peter. I don't have anything to add at this point at all. Uh, thank you.
Okay, else? Okay. Having heard, no additional requests to speak, I will go ahead and close the public comment uh, section of this application, and we'll bring it back to the planning commission. Um, so what I'd, what I'd like to do is, as we go around the room, um, I'd like people to speak to the uh, the narrative that was in our packet to see if you have any other questions or comments regarding the um, the work that town staff did with Ron over the past month. And then um, and then finally, address uh, any of the uh, SRU um, requirements. Go through um, and make any comments on those, and we'll try to do that and go around the room um, early quickly if we have any uh, further comments on that. So with that, let's um, let's go around. We'll start with um, Billy, do you have anything else um, that you wanted to bring up at this point based upon the information, both in the packet and with the requirements for the SRU?
Um, thanks. Um, yeah, I um, I I'm glad Karen brought up, um, you know, the email for, or the, yeah, the email comment from from Holly there with Hair by Holly and and it sounds like Ron has reached out to her. So be, you know, she brings up good points about just reality of close access and and then, you know, I I am curious how the vet parking in kind of a ER type situation is for for vet, you know, uh, clients, um, patients, you know, you know, works. Um, I guess, um, um, you want specific, I I mean, the three, two other things I have, I just, you know, look back at January, I had talked about, you know, how do we really stop people from just parking wherever they want in the residential, um, you know, down on First Street, Second Street in front of people's houses? And it and it really, you know, as it is now, it's legal, they can. And it looks like Karen Garrity, I don't remember you saying this, Karen, but you probably did, um, that that um, that can be enforced, you know, and so I'm kind of curious about what's the reality of the town's cost for parking enforcement. I'm sure there's gonna be revenue, but there's also costs and trade-offs of a, you know, of the police monitoring those neighborhoods more. Um, and then it was, we've had three public comments, two. Um, one was written, I believe, and the other two were people that, you know, commented, you know, also in January, um, about, you know, being opposed to parking passes, you know, which there's no mention of those here, but they've been brought up now three times. I think people are um, you know, it it seems possible and and people are suggesting this uh, already because they're expecting some kind of like issue when the reality happens of people just parking to the east in the in the residential area. Um, so then I'm kind of curious of what what kind of costs are incurred for the town administering the whole parking pass, you know, program um, for places outside of this, you know, paid parking area. Um, those are my two questions that make me kind of just rub up against um, criteria for, you know, for passing for approval. Um, for me, um, with a specifically, um, let me bring it back up here. Specifically, um, the just A three where it, you know, minimizes potential adverse impact of the special reviews use on adjacent properties and traffic flow. And it it it, there's a lot of anticipation and 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 um, it just seems the reality of people deciding to park elsewhere that is gonna bring a whole host of other issues that will indeed um, create an adverse impact on adjacent properties and traffic flow in those areas. Um, and then I did find a twenty-five percent, I I don't know if we're gonna talk about this, you know, if if there's a change that that is that Ron wants to make, this twenty-five percent or less, um, uh, of the I'm running now, I got the email yesterday and I kind of saw it pop up quick, but um, I I found it interesting that the example was like, if if buildings are knocked down to create more parking, I I mean, as an example, that just caught my eye. Um, as a, as an interesting um, kind of thought, I don't know who exactly just picked that example out, but um, um, you know, that buildings would be parked on and just more parking would be added. Of course, that does seem um, totally reasonable and if there's more space, that could be done. I, you know, I don't know if we're getting on this at this point, but the twenty-five percent seems quite high when you talk about twenty-six more parking spots and added to a hundred and five. So that's, that's the main things I'm uh, yeah.
Uh, that, um, I think that was just an example, but the the further question regarding that is whether or not it needs to come back to the planning commission or it or staff is allowed to make these changes?
Yeah, and I guess I don't know if we're commenting on that or or, you know, when later on, when we talk through, you know, proving whether we are breaking out those red line things in the SRU, but um, I think that's a pretty high percentage to 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 not have extra scrutiny of a special review.
Okay. Um, yeah, that that was listed in the uh, narrative, so uh, that's why I said we could, you could go ahead and talk about it now. We can we can bring it up later, a list of changes to the SRU.
Okay, I mean, I guess I'm bringing it up now in that, um, that seems like a very high, um, thanks, thanks for bringing it up so I can see it again, um, percentage um, to go of twenty-five percent change um, without extra scrutiny seems quite high. And and yeah, the example is an interesting one, that's all, so.
Okay, Billy?
I think that's all I have.
Okay, you'll have a chance again if you think of anything else. We'll, we'll go uh, back to that. Um, okay, Karen, you're next.
Um, so um, I don't have any um, uh, anything to say. Yeah, I think the the application, I like where it is right now compared to where it was uh, um, last time and the couple of times before that. Um, I'm okay with the twenty-five percent. I'm trusting that um, our town administrator will carefully look at um, the change request to see if it's um, within the structure of the um, of the current plan. If it doesn't adhere a lot from the plan, if it's more or less just adding or removing parking spaces. Um, I do want to check that time limit on the exceptions. Four years. And then al- also, we might want to check that um, uh, the properties that the applicant needs to purchase. Um, I looked at it in the agreement, I and I'm not sure if it needs to be changed in that area. Um, and that's all.
Okay, good, thank you. Um, Chris Parry, comments?
I just have to reiterate what Cindy said about parking where we'll be in wetland areas because you wouldn't want to have cars that are leaking and things like that going into rivers and wetland areas. The other aspect is, I still think that there's egress issues with an emergency situation going on by where you have cars parked.
Okay, and I thought you had a second one.
And then the second one is just the, is I don't, I'm not comfortable with the factor of the clients having to give an attendant their keys to their car. The client should be able to park their car, pay for it, and not have to worry about anybody coming near it or somebody needing keys to get into their car while they're in a restaurant or a business around the area.
Okay, thank you. Um, Roger? You're up.
I'm just gonna give you all my final comments right now, so you can just, hopefully you guys all think about this in the next few moments. Uh, certainly, last month, I spoke against this proposal. And I see my 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 same concerns have not changed. I I do want to talk, I guess the map's up there. I want to just talk about a couple of parking spots that have issues. Uh, the two that I had mentioned there, along Snyder, uh, excuse me, along Second Street and Snyder, there's two spots there at the animal hospital. Uh, you know, that would just back out onto the street. And then there's also a long Snyder, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven spots along Snyder. Uh, they, I may be wrong, but the history, as I understand, Chris Bray maybe could wait, check this out, but it doesn't matter. Um, when Saltos came into being, there was a parking issue down there, and there actually was parallel parking along Snyder Street. And Ron Mitchell, to his, his good uh, spirit and volunteerism, actually did a wonderful thing. And he provided that, you know, the parking uh, along Snyder, the back end spots. Um, and everybody just went for that. But now, several years later, it's gonna, you know, they want to make this paved parking. And I would say that the two there on Second Street and the ones along Snyder, um, there's actually no reason why a public person couldn't just come along and parallel park along that road there because that's the way it was. Uh, but now it's gonna become, you know, a private paid parking lot. So I think there's a conflict and that and he actually has not, like on all the other parking spaces, you actually have to have off-street parking, actually have to have an eight-foot driveway to get onto your property. So if everybody was just to park along, say, First Street, all of a sudden just turns their parking to diagonal parking, it would be chaos. So it's, you know, it was parallel parking. Ron did a wonderful thing, and he should get kudos for that. But now it's becoming a private paid parking lot, and it is on private property, but we did eliminate the five, four or five parallel parking spaces, which would be free. So those are just a small little concern. It's actually the thing that was up there at the uh, Thai restaurant where they were backing across the sidewalk. There was a very dangerous situation. And again, this should be, could be parallel parking. So those are, those are just minor issues with that plan. But what I'm really speaking of, what I spoke of last month is that the the business needs to provide customer parking. In fact, just a couple of months ago, I don't even know if it's still there, but if you came down there all during the fall and tried to park in many of those parking spaces at the uh, Thai restaurant or behind the mine shaft, there was big signs there, customer parking only. So as I said last month, there needs to be customer parking only. I I need to be as a customer, come drive down there. I don't need to have a phone, leave my phone number. I don't need to leave my keys with a valet. It's designated, that's our, to me, is the standard for this community and for our ordinance that there be designated customer parking. And as Ron spoke tonight, the issue on the hairdresser and the other retail store down there, well, it, it's going to be flexible. Karen, that more certainty spoke of one of her, one of the letters saying where, you know, someone had concerns and she was right on that this proposal trying to have it both ways. And last month, the planning commission was very clear about employee parking, oh, excuse me. It was very clear about the residential parking. Needs to be very clear designated. They shouldn't have to juggle their cars around. There needs to be spots for them. Well, I, I take that approach and that's the exact same approach. It should be for any customer that's going parking down there. On, under this proposal, if there's some kind of event in town, or as he spoke, someone would show up in the morning, pay for a parking spot. There's no guarantee that when the customer comes down later in the day that there's customer parking. So for me, this is actually one of the easiest decisions I've ever made on the planning commission. And I hope you would all think about it the exact same way. You all have your decision, I shouldn't have even said that. But for me, that's my personal opinion and this way I understand it that part, our code definitely says there should be customer parking and he needs to provide designated parking for the customers. If there was another area, say on, uh, north on Second Street or wherever else, you could kind of come up with lots that are above and beyond the required spaces that are not, that valet parking are not double parking or elevator parking, which is not part of proposal. But i- if you would bring an actual private lot that is going to be a paid private lot, then I would agree with that. But I do not agree with a mix and a, you know, a double, you know, put it be this way in the mornings or this way at night. I cannot, cannot have a mix and match for the designated obligated customer parking. That's it. That's all my comments, that's all I will say, that's how we vote.
Okay.
Can I, I, I need to just step in just for one second. And that's Commissioner Cornell. You stated, I think before we were recording, but I think it's important to know whether you listened to the January meeting that you weren't in attendance.
The answer is yes, I did. I listened to all three hours of the tape. Geez, I actually even took notes. And the Ron Mitchell's parking, we talked about parking on the down streets, parking on 119, oh, whatever happened to that one lot there in front of Nature Own? We spoke of the pros and cons, as I mentioned, the residential parking. There was discussion of the parking attendant, drainage agreement. Karen had issues with the comp plan and there, and another one that I actually haven't brought up tonight was that 100 East First Street was going to be removed from the agreement. So absolutely, I did listen to the entire tape.
Yep.
I have a question for Jennifer. Is this an appropriate time to ask or?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just wondering why Section 16202, it wouldn't not apply to the commercial spaces in this application? There, you know, I see we have residential spaces reserved that aren't paid, but then the commercial spaces that are required in Section 16202 are all paid. And, and they're not really reserved in, in, as far as location is concerned. And, and depending upon, um, how many, uh, how busy the town, town area is, there might not be spaces for, um, those commercial properties.
I, I'm not exactly sure what your question is to me.
Okay, oh, okay, okay. I, I guess I, I'll ask that another time. And then I had a question for Roger, which, where are the, where are the spaces that we're losing for parallel parking?
They would be the sites, well, the ones I spoke of were on, uh, on Second Street, that's Snyder, the corner there, the two that would back out onto Second Street. But then diagonal parking, the backend parking is the ones opposite of Saltos. And, and then I said, well, what I'm really saying, we didn't lose them, but before Ron on his goodwill actually made that parking lot, there was parallel parking along Snyder Street.
Okay.
He just, that's Saltos.
Okay, so it's only those two, the, the ones in front of the animal hospital?
Oh.
Well, those two, correct. But now, now these are becoming, the ones on Snyder are becoming paid parking. Are they not part of this plan?
On Snyder?
On Snyder, one, two, three, four, five.
Oh, they're on, those are on private property, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's, those are the ones.
Yeah, but he hasn't really gotten any access to drive into that. What I'm saying is if I would drive down there and park parallel parking on Snyder Street in front of one of those parking spaces, I think I would be legally right to do that. Unless we approve, basically that was a win-win and now they're making it a paid parking.
Okay, thank you.
He's taking away the way to make a, I think that's, why do you understand what I'm saying?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next, let's go to Linda, Linda there?
Yeah, I'm still here. After listening to the concerns and the positive and the negative from the rest of the commissioners, a lot of my concerns and statements have been met. My one concern definitely is the same with, with the paid parking and if people don't pay where they will park and how the town will address that issue. If that becomes an issue for the, um, how it will affect it.
So is that a question for staff?
Yes, it is.
Are you asking specifically how we would handle residential parking? If people, if people wanting to go to the businesses was, were parked in the residential areas?
Correct.
Because it wouldn't be any different than it is now, which means if it's signed no parking or it's signed so many hours for parking, then we would have, um, you know, the ability, the officers would have the ability to write a ticket. I will say, um, uh, parking is not a top priority for our, our police force, mainly because we are so small and we're so understaffed. So, but I imagine it wouldn't be that different than it is now. On any, especially any busy summer day or leaf peeper day or, um, pre-COVID moment.
I just, I just want to know what the burden would be put on the town, which is hard to really realize at this time. But it seems there would be some of a burden on, over at the shopping center as well. And I know that Tebow had concerns about that too. So I think on my comments, most of, most of my comments have been stated that this was just one of my concerns.
Okay, right, Linda, Jim?
Yes, thank you. First off, like I, I want to echo my comment I said before. I think that Mr. Mitchell and his team have done a really good job being receptive to the concerns of the planning commission and coming back with an improved product each time. I know there was some frustration last time, probably all around, but I, I think that we've worked together and come up with something that I think is, is doable and acceptable plan. There's a few areas of concern, but mostly if the staff is supportive of it and feels like they can work with the applicant on this, I'm in favor of it. I was a little concerned by the annual review by the planning commission portion where the applicant does not agree to formal review that would result in the planning commission recommending additional conditions to be added to the SRU agreement. My question to you, Mr. Mitchell, is if there's some serious problems that arise, let's say on your second annual review, you come back and talk to us and you say, hey, they're probably just going on here, but by that time, we've had 300 complaints from the residents and the businesses throughout the central business district and on down Second Street and First Street. And we were to bring that to your concern, basically what you're saying there is you could say, well, too bad, I don't have to do anything because, you know, we agreed that we can't add any additional requirements. Would you agree to try and work in good faith with us during those reviews if there were some problems that had arose during the process of implementation?
I'd like to ask Karen to answer this question before I answer yours. Karen, has there ever been a complaint that you've addressed to me that I didn't try to do something about?
Are you talking Karen Garrity?
Yes, I am.
No, every time that there's been a concern, you've worked with me to work through it.
Does her, her answer to my question answer your question, Mr. Reese?
Yes, I would just echo that then. Thank you for that response there, Town Manager Garrity. I, I hope that, you know, as a good, you know, uh, landowner there and you're doing this project, you would also work, you know, with the residents and the, and the business owners as much as possible. I understand that ultimately this is a profit-making venture, trying to solve some parking issues. And I appreciate how much you have changed the plan that we had concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Jim?
No, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay, I just have a few comments. The, um, most of them have been already addressed. I still have some, uh, maybe this is a question for staff about the, um, the staff review with 25% or less change. It doesn't seem like the planning commission, um, has a lot of concern about that, but I was sort of curious from the staff's point of view, how you feel about, uh, that as opposed to should it come back to the planning commission?
So I, this is Miranda. I talked with Mr. Mitchell about the 25%. We kind of brainstormed a couple of different numbers. I, I feel the 25% is okay. And as Commissioner Blakemore noted, really it will be Karen Garrity who helps to drive that process. And I have absolute faith that she will be able to assess if it's beyond the scope that's appropriate for staff and make that recommendation to the Board of Trustees that they review major changes. In terms of adding the spaces, one thing I think for the commission to take note of is, originally this project, I believe at one point had 150-plus spaces. So the applicant has now dropped it down to 105. So an addition of 26 is still under what was originally proposed to the planning commission back when this first came before you. I don't know, Karen, if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to basically say, say the same thing, which is we are comfortable with that and we do have a good team and we will scrutinize it. And if we do feel there's anything that really should come back to you all, we will make sure that happens. Or go to the BOT.
Right. Okay, and then with regard to this annual review by the planning commission, it's still fuzzy in my mind exactly what that is. It, it says here that it's an informational update to the PC annually if requested, but it is not a formal review, uh, which would result in recommending or the PC recommending any additional conditions to be added to the SRU agreement. So I'm not really sure what this really is. And, and secondly, how long will this oversight be? I, I'm assuming it's over the length of the, of the, um, project or maybe it's more. Maybe both town staff and Ron can chime in on that.
So yeah, it's Miranda, it would be the, kind of the life of the project that he would come back annually. And the, the discussion was rather than just removing the annual review altogether, that Mr. Mitchell felt that it was appropriate to come back and give an informational update. What he does not want is to continue to have his application reviewed in this type of setting where more conditions are added to the SRU agreement. And then as Vice Chair Reese had noted, Mr. Mitchell is willing to work on any issues that arise, but does not want formal changes made in the SRU agreement annually as it could create issues or delays in him being able to execute his project. Ron, I don't know if you have other things to add?
One thing I wanted to say, this is, uh, uh, Town Administrator Garrity. It's, it's like a courtesy check-in because this is a multi-year project. It's a way to stay, um, keep informed with the planning commission so you all know that it's on target or maybe something is a little behind or ahead of schedule, whatever. It's like a courtesy check-in, um, so that you guys stay on top of the project and see how it continues to unfold. It is not though a regulatory, um, ex, you know, exercise.
This is Linda and I have a question on that statement, Karen. Would we be able to have recommendations or suggestions if we feel we needed to, to staff?
Are you saying suggestions or recommendations that are changes to the agreement?
No, if there were different, as the project goes on and we're kept apprised to if it's on time, if things are being done properly, if there are issues, do we come to staff with these issues and concerns? Or even with compliments? Do we direct it to staff or to the applicant?
Well, when, when the applicant is coming before you to do this kind of courtesy check-in, that's when you guys can have that conversation. Are you saying if something comes up between those annual check-ins?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, between, you're welcome to reach out to staff and let us know. And then we can work directly with the, with, with the developer, with Ron.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have, this is Billy, I have one comment, just based on Jim's and Linda's. So the annual, annual review seems like a good idea as a courtesy and, and, you know, it is, is, you know, it's just great to know, kind of keep, keep up with what's happening. And, you know, Jim threw out the possibility of like 300-plus comments or whatever. And then, and then, you know, you asked Karen, how is Ron, address comments? And, you know, and your track record is good, Ron, but the applicant is actually not Ron Mitchell, it's NCBDR and, and, um, you know, we're at, for whatever reasons, to be that Ron was not the spokesman, how do we know that the 300? how do we know that the 300 complaints wouldn't just be shrugged off? That's where I mean, we got to, to me, it's important, we look at the applicant, we look at the timeframe and the amount of time it's going to take and the future of it. And have to, I think, have a little more ability to not burden the, the NCBDR, but, um, I'll go back to the actual words, I'm not just wording up. But, um, and, and so you don't agree to a formal review that result in the PC recommending additional conditions? So I think, and if it's Ron with a good tracker, that might be one thing. But if it's the NCBDR with maybe someone else at the helm at some point, it may be another. And so that's where I think we don't necessarily, you know, green to this, it doesn't seem wise at this time.
Okay, that, that sort of was related to my last question. If we had any recourse, should things not be working and the PC basically would come up with comments? What, what would happen? And Linda asked that question about do we go to staff or do we go back to the applicant? And, and what, what's the recourse? What happens after that?
Well, I think you're, you have to remember that what you're doing is you're, you're making a recommendation to have it go before the Board of Trustees. And once it gets up to the Board of Trustees level, then I think maybe some of that could be discussed. Because, you know, when I think about big projects like Caribou Ridge, they, they're not coming back to you. They're, they're going to the Board of Trustees if they need to, let's say, make an amendment to their agreement or whatever. So I, I'm anticipating that's more likely the route that would, would unfold if something were to, you know, some situation happens that needs to be addressed. But maybe I, I'm not seeing it clearly, but that, that's, that's the way I would anticipate it going. And that his check-in with you is really a courtesy. That being said, I mean, if anyone on the planning commission or anyone in the public has concerns about something that is being developed, they're, they can always come and talk to staff about that.
Sure.
And, and can I just chime in? This is Jennifer Madsen. I, I just wanted to let you all know that the code language related to special review uses doesn't really provide for these annual check-ins. As Karen Garrity is mentioning, that this is a courtesy that Mr. Mitchell is offering. And so to, to make this a requirement and part of the agreement and, and mandate that additional conditions are imposed really goes above and beyond what's provided in the code. And so if he, if he's not in agreement to additional conditions for these reviews, there isn't really authority for you to require the check-ins with additional conditions.
Okay, well, it's, thank you. Yeah, now it's clear that this really is more of a courtesy or an informational update only to us. And I'm, and I'm assuming, though, that, that issues that would be brought up would already have been either addressed by staff or perhaps to the BOT. So, so I was just sort of curious exactly what this annual review was because I don't ever recall, maybe you do, Roger, ever recall such a thing before, and how that might work. So, so that was, yes?
This is Cynthia. This was done for Cheryl Finelli for the marijuana, the cannabis smoke club that was done. And so she had, she didn't have annual reviews. She had, I think it was a six-month review possibly, because it was an unknown use. So we didn't know how it would go. And they just, the, the PC sought to check back in with Cheryl, and they did. And I, I don't remember that having any issues. And she came back and discussed her project. And town staff noted if there were any complaints from the PD or anyone else. And then just considered that, like, how is this fitting in? That was a, that was part of the agreement that they, that you guys made in terms of a, a condition of the review to check it out because you wouldn't know necessarily what impacts to anticipate.
Okay, I don't recall, to come back to planning, because I know that it was a staff, staff was going to handle any complaints or things like that. But, but anyway, thank you. Okay, finally, to wrap this up, what I'd like to do then is to, if Miranda, if you could bring up the SRU with any changes, we can kind of go around the horn one last time. I'd like to get a feel from each of the commission members on how they, how they might vote. And if, if they're in favor of it, to make sure that they're, that all conditions or changes to the SRU are, are included. So with that, we'll, we'll go back around the horn again and we'll, we'll start, we'll, we'll start with Karen because I think the, the timeline, we've already discussed about having extensions. I just want to make sure that, that that's, you're happy with, with what we discussed and anything else, and how you might, how you're leaning on this vote.
Okay, so, um, we don't have the, the time limit in the document at this point. But I, my, my proposal was a four-year maximum time limit. And if the development exceeds that time, then, then they must obtain approval from the Board of Trustees. And that second statement applies as well. The Board of Trustees may impose a cessation of the operations, et cetera. If it exceeds time, it must obtain. Okay, that looks good. And then towards the top of this agreement, where it discusses how the two properties need to be purchased, it's on the very first page. Okay, so the first, whereas, about the middle of that paragraph, and two other properties under different ownership, which may require property owner permission. So I, reading that, I think that we're okay to leave that as is. And, and then if the applicant does not have ownership of that property, then that would modify the parking plan. But the modification would simply be to remove those paid parking places. I'm not sure that we need to change that, that verbiage at all.
I, I think it needs to be more clear. This is, this is Jennifer Madsen. So I would suggest that it be more clear. And, and Mr. Mitchell sounds like he's in agreement with that, so, that's my recommendation.
Okay, so that whatever wording is appropriate, I am, I'm okay with. And so was there anything else that, that you wanted to say for me?
Oh, just to, if, with, with the changes that were described to the SRU, are you comfortable or what, what's your view on whether this should go through or not?
Uh, yes, I will vote to approve.
Okay. All right, let's go next to Billy. See if you had any further comments regarding the SRU draft or changes to it and how you might be considering.
Um, I, yeah, I agree, like if things are cleaned up at the beginning about plot change, you know, about property ownership, that seems important to happen. And then timeframe, I think the 25% is too high, so that red line item I, I more agree with. And I think, are you asking me what I'm, where I'm at with regards to voting on just this SRU or, or this, these red lines?
Uh, well, sort of both, actually.
Okay, yeah, okay, no, no, that, that's cool, or that, that's reasonable. And then regarding the SRU, I think I will vote no, I would vote no because it's just, it does not meet the approval criteria in 1655 of minimizing potential adverse impact of the special review, review use on adjacent properties and traffic flow. I just think any paid parking project on this scale would, can't meet those criteria.
Okay, thank you. Roger?
That does sound like a broken record, but I encourage you guys to look at it. And I believe this project does not meet the standard for 16202 parking standards designated for each use. We're not getting standards for customer parking and employee parking or designated parking for those uses. It's, to me, it clearly doesn't meet the, meet the standard on our parking section 16202.
This is Billy. I, I like to add that as well, when Roger pointed that out and I really read it. I agree, it also just doesn't meet that code 16202.
Okay, Chris, Chris Parry?
I concur with both what Billy and Roger said. And I would sway to voting no.
So, uh, this is Karen again. So I think that, that the applicant addressed the parking for employees by saying he would work with the employees to make sure they had parking and that might involve putting up signs saying this space is reserved for employees from a certain time to a certain time. So with the way, with his explanation, I felt okay with 16202.
Okay, um, let's go to Linda.
Um, yes, I am still a little bit undecided on this because of the concerns that Roger has brought up and Billy has addressed as well. I'm undecided how I would vote at this point. I know that Ron has worked, Ron has worked extremely hard trying to meet all of our, I mean, everything we have asked, he has gone above and beyond to try to acknowledge that and to work with staff, but I'm still a little bit undecided.
Okay, Linda, is there anything else that, I'm sorry?
William, this is Cynthia. I just want to make a, a point real quick in the code of, in the off-street parking code. So people have talked about drainage detention and other things. And I don't know if anyone's mentioned Section 206, location of spaces. That code, the third parking spaces shall be located not farther than 300 feet from the building or use there required to serve measured in a straight line from the building. So Ron owns all of this property, and in some cases it's feasible, it will meet 16206. In some cases, it may not. And so I just, you know, and maybe a, a check-in with Attorney Madsen of how would people turn at locations for a building in effect Section 16-206?
Cynthia, I'm not, I'm not really, I don't understand what the, what your question is that you're asking me.
Oh, okay, um, sorry, I'll try to clarify a little bit better.
I mean, I think that, I think that the, the commissioners really are going through deliberation. I'm not sure that, that this is a right time for you to be. I mean, the commissioner should be asking me questions.
I see. I, I guess this, this came up in my head when Chair Cornell had talked about spaces being dedicated to, to a building. And that part of the code is, is, is sort of intending that without saying they must be right next to the building. So it's sort of giving a, a distance requirement, but I don't know if it's relevant, pardon me for mentioning it.
Okay, I hadn't even seen that. But, all right, well, let's just continue with the comments. So Linda, you, you don't have any other comments? I guess my question was if, if the SRU were to go through, is there anything else you'd want changed or included in the draft?
No, I think we've gone over the issues that I had on what I wanted to be included and changed.
Okay, all right, Jim?
Yes, thank you. Ultimately, I feel like property owner rights are, you know, if it is allowed by use through the town code, property owner should be allowed to use that property as he wishes. I feel like we have really impacted a lot of change on this plan. And Mr. Mitchell is, you know, in good faith, come and work with us. And I trust the staff telling us that he, they feel that they can work with this plan and oversee it and that doesn't create any undue hardship to the town. And I also trust Mr. Mitchell saying that if there are properties, problems that arise, that he will work in good faith with the town staff to correct any of those. So right now, I, I would be in favor of it.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to see in the SRU draft that we haven't discussed?
No.
Okay, thank you. So I think the draft looks as complete to me at this point. I'm, like Linda, I'm sort of undecided. I can, I see both sides. I do have some concerns, not exactly sure that it meets 16202 completely. I do have faith that the staff has worked through a lot of the issues with the applicant. And I do appreciate the applicant's willingness to, to modify and to try to make this work. But I don't have any other further comments at this point. Are we, is there any other further discussion before we take a vote?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I think the thing that catches my eye in 16202 is that in the CBD, you know, in the text at the bottom, at the top of the section there, in the CBD, which is where this is, applicants shall meet their off-street parking requirement by either providing parking behind or under the building or making a payment. So I mean, that doesn't seem to necessarily be consistent with the 300 feet. And so I feel like that's where it's, you know, the parking lot is filled with a bunch of people going other places. And so people would not meet their off-street parking requirement.
Okay, any other?
Billy, I don't quite understand what you said. How, how is that related to 300 feet?
It's not. And that's what I'm trying to say. So it kind of, it kind of moves out in my opinion. I mean, it's more specific. It just calls out the CBD specifically, um, and says applicant. So I guess it overrides the 300 feet. That's what I'm trying to say. In the CBD, applicants shall meet their off-street parking requirement by either providing parking behind or under the building or by making a payment into the commercial parking fund for each non-provided space. So that is where to me, it's, it can't be, um, um, it can't meet that because it can't ensure that those spots will be available. If a bunch of people come and pay a park and fill the place up and go elsewhere, then when people, then, then that business is not meeting its requirement.
Unless he puts signage up saying the spot is reserved for employees.
Well, but that's not what, um, that's not what it says. It's not talking about for employees. Parking standards designated for each use, the year-round accessible off-street parking space requirements for each use shall be listed as below. Space shall mean off-street parking space. In the CBD, applicants shall meet their off-street parking requirement by providing parking behind or under the building or making a payment.
Yeah, okay, okay. I, I get what you're saying. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, so, uh, do we have a, a motion out there? Um, what's, is there any conditions? Well, the conditions are in the SRU.
Okay.
That the changes, that's why I went around.
Yep.
Making sure that everything was in there.
To add them. Gotcha.
No, they're already in there. So the question is, I guess, do we have a motion out there to, uh, approve the SRU, uh, the draft SRU for the, uh, paid, uh, paid parking or special review use for paid parking in the central business district, uh, with the draft SRU with the amended, uh, changes as shown and discussed. Um, do we have a motion out there?
This is Jim Reese. I make a motion as such.
And I second.
Okay. Who's second? You, you, Roger seconded? Okay. Any other further discussion?
This is Jim Reese. I'll just add one thing to the, uh, required parking. As I understand it, the applicant has said that he will provide, uh, employees, the ability and customers, uh, of businesses, the ability to park in any of those spots for free, that the employees would have some identification, uh, method to be able to park anywhere in that whole complex. And right now, on a busy day, people are not guaranteed a space in that spot if they work there. There's been plenty of time when I used to work, uh, at the branding iron and would show up with my DJ equipment and I would have to haul it pretty dang far because there was already, the parking was already filled. Uh, so there's no guarantee that there's a, a spot available right now as it is. Uh, I would just say that I, I think that the applicant has made an effort to say, hey, you're going to be able to park anywhere in here, but you might have to walk, uh, a little ways. That's all I have.
Yep. That's a good point, Jim.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay.
This, so Mike Die, I was wondering if this, uh,
No, no, no.
A public comment at this point.
No, Mike, uh, public comment is closed. Sorry.
Understood. Sorry.
Yep. Okay. Um, so Cynthia, could you, um, could you take the, uh, the vote, please?
It's, so we have, uh, if I'm getting this correct, I have the motion by Vice Chair Reese and I have a second by Commissioner Cornell.
That's correct.
Okay, great. It was a little garbled at the second. Uh, I'm going to run down the list here and we're going to go backwards. Start with, uh, Vice Chair Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Paray?
No.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giblin?
No.
Commissioner Cornell?
Oh.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams?
Uh, Chair Williams.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Chair Williams. Oh, yeah.
No.
No? We have three yeses and four no's. Did I get everybody? I think I got everybody.
Six, seven. Oh, it's seven. Yeah. I think she has everyone.
So I have four opposed and three, uh, in support.
Okay. So, well, thank you. And this was a, this was a very, very difficult, uh, application. I appreciate everyone's instant hard work on this. Of course, it goes to the Board of Trustees. They'll make the final decision. Um, but, um, but anyway, uh, thank you very much. I would recommend that we take a five-minute break before we continue the meeting.
Excellent. Excellent recommendation.
Okay. All right. So let's, uh, we'll, uh, meet back here at, um, let's just say nine o'clock or just before.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're taking a break. Okay. Uh, is Miranda there?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Is Julian going to join us for, at this point, or?
Yeah, he's working on jumping in.
Oh, great. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't forget about poor Julian.
Nope, he's on his way.
Excellent. Okay. We'll wait for him. And for the, um, for the discussion item, um, is this going to be presented by, uh, Jennifer or is it presented by, by you?
Attorney Madison.
Okay.
And trustee Taylor is familiar with this item. If you wanted to get started while he's working on getting on, or you can wait for him.
Well, yeah. Okay. It's about nine o'clock. So I guess we should get started because I don't want to go too late tonight, obviously. Okay. Is, uh, Attorney Mattson, are you there and ready?
I am, I am here and I am ready.
Okay. And I just wanted to start out by thanking you so much for the hard work on this. Uh, I think it was well put together. We'll let you present it and, um, go from there. Thank you.
Uh, and Miranda, can I share my screen? Do you know? Can I? Oh, it looks like I can. Yes. Here we go. See?
I just stopped sharing mine, so you should be able to.
Oh, okay.
Share yours.
All right. So. There we go. Now can you see the PowerPoint?
We can see our notes section two.
Yeah. I don't know if you want to turn that off or not.
Let me see.
On that.
How's that? Can you just see the, the PowerPoint?
Uh, well, you should go into present mode.
I, I am, and it's not letting me.
Oh.
Um, let me stop this really quick. And then I will, I will, I will get this this time.
Okay.
Promise. Here it comes.
Yeah, that's good. Good.
Got it? Okay, good. All right. So we're talking about encroachments on town property here. So what is an encroachment? An encroachment is one property owner's intrusion or invasion of property onto the property of another. Here are some examples of encroachment. You can see here on this, um, slide that this residential property is encroaching, um, with the swimming pool, with the landscaping onto right of way. Here's another example of encroachment. So this is bushes, um, shrubs encroaching onto the town right of way because they're overhanging. Other examples would be building projections, which would be a part of a structure that extends into the right of way, such as stairs, railings, maybe doors or windows that swing out, um, decorative features on a building or fence. Um, there's probably lots of examples of encroachments. So why are encroachments a concern? Um, encroachment is considered a trespass onto the town right of way. Um, we want to make sure that there's safety of pedestrians, vehicles in the right of way. And we're concerned with the encroachment, um, because it's a, it really is a legal issue as to who has ownership and can, um, be on the property. The town could be bringing claim to remove whatever is encroaching onto the town right of way. Um, in addition, the property owner could also potentially raise a claim saying that they are, um, should have title to that property. So the solution to this is an encroachment license. And what that does is it documents the existence of the encroachment. It spells out that property owner A has this structure, has this, um, protrusion of a building that is encroaching onto town right of way, specifies where that encroachment is. Um, it erases any question as to property ownership, identifies the rights and responsibilities of the property owners, and really it benefits both the property owner and the town. Um, this slide here shows the terms of a revocable encroachment license. Again, the encroachment property is described, gives the town permission, the town gives permission to the property owner to retain that encroachment, saying, yes, it's okay. You can have your building on town right of way. The licensee, who is a property owner, agrees to legal responsibility for any damages caused by the encroachment. Um, the licensee agrees to maintain and repair these private improvements, which would be the encroachment. Um, and this agreement is recode, recorded in the property records so that other people have notice that, uh, that the encroachment exists and notice of the different rights and responsibilities. Um, the encroachment license is revocable and that the encroachment license spells out the, um, way that the encroachment can be removed or that's, that the license is revoked. encroachment license spells out the way that the encroachment can be removed, or that's, that the license is revoked. And the first is if the encroachment is removed, so say the building is demolished, if that's the encroachment, then obviously the encroachment license is revoked. The other way is at a public meeting, the Board of Trustees determines that removal of the private improvements is necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare. Then the encroachment license can be revoked. The licensee may also terminate at any time. One thing I wanted to bring to you tonight specifically related to the discussion of encroachment is this section 11-3 of the draft ordinance that you have before you tonight. This is the section that was discussed with the Board of Trustees, and they asked that we bring this to you. Essentially, what it is in this section is a property owner must obtain an encroachment license from the town clerk. The town clerk decides whether to issue the license and specifies the terms and conditions of the license. So the issue that the Board of Trustees wanted to bring to you is this appeal process. In section 11-3, there's an appeal of the town clerk's decision, and that would be the recommendation is to the Planning Commission. Then the Planning Commission would have an administrative review and consider those factors which are spelled out in the ordinance as to whether to reverse or affirm the town clerk's decision related to the encroachment license. One other thing to spell out is that an encroachment license may be required as a condition of approval of a land use application for special review use. So that is the end of my presentation and discussion of encroachment licenses, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Jennifer, may I provide a little context on this?
Yes.
I, I'm afraid my WebEx took a little while to bring me in, so I may have missed this. But I did want to mention that the original presentation to the Board of Trustees supported an appeal of the town clerk's decision to the town clerk's supervisor. And the Board of Trustees was concerned that that may represent a conflict of interest. It would seem to be, it would seem to be a rather tepid appeal if it was an appeal to the town clerk's boss. And that was why we proposed that an appeal would be to the Planning Commission. So just wanted to make sure that that context was clear.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Julian. And thank you, Jennifer. Does anyone, any commissioners have any questions for Attorney Mattson at this point?
This is Karen. I have a couple. One is just a confirmation that the licensee is non-transferable until the property.
Yes.
The license is between the property owner and the town.
Correct.
So if the property is sold, the new owner would need to get another license. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, this is all part of the license agreement. So that's, it's negotiable.
Okay. Okay. And the, well, I'm glad I asked that question then. And the other one is I didn't see any language to the effect that it only applies to historical encroachments. So my concern is that someone makes a new encroachment, and then they apply for a license. So there's no timeframe in there. The encroachment had to exist prior to a certain date. I didn't see that language.
And it's not in there. So that is, it's not the intent to only apply to historical encroachments. There could be a situation where a property owner, you know, may may have a good reason for encroaching onto the town right-of-way, and the town may be agreeable to that encroachment. And in that situation, the license would be would be the right way to go with that.
Okay, and then does the, the agreement specify the type of encroachment in addition to the property that's being encroached on? So now, okay, so say like a driveway, a tree, some personal property of some sort. Okay.
Absolutely, yes. It tended to be very clear as to what it is that is on the town's right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from commissioners?
Chris Pore has one.
Chris Pore.
How can this be put if somebody's getting a license for encroachment that doesn't turn into a land grab?
So the, the.
Because I know of the number of encroachments that turn out to be land grabs in the long run.
The property ownership stays with the town, so the town keeps the right-of-way. It doesn't, it isn't giving away any portion of the right-of-way. What the encroachment license does is document that the town owns the property, and that the neighboring property owner, adjacent property owner, has something, a structure, a branch, part of a building that extends out onto the town's property. And the town is, is giving permission to that adjacent property owner to, to allow for that extension of property under the terms of the encroachment license. It's not transferring property in any way to an adjacent property owner. The adjacent property owner doesn't in fact get property rights. It's only a license to use the property.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else?
I have a question on the historic encroachments because with the town of Netherlands, that seems to be an issue on Old Town and a lot of the properties. How would that work with historic encroachments?
So what the, if this ordinance is passed, my understanding from town staff, and Miranda can speak to this a little bit more, but is it town staff would begin approaching people in the CBD that have encroachments and work to get those encroachments documented into this encroachment license agreement?
That's correct. This is Miranda. That is correct. That is the, the plan if this is to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question for, for town staff. You know me, every time I see things like this, I worry about impact on town staff and costs and, and that sort of thing. So I'm sort of curious because we do have such a historical number of these. I'm just curious what, what town staff thinks about the impact.
Miranda, do you want to answer that? Because Miranda and I have talked about this, and we've also addressed this at the, at the BOT level.
Yeah, I think that there's already been communication with, especially in the CBD, with some of those business owners who do encroach, and it's a matter of completing this agreement, and so I don't anticipate it'll take a significant amount of staff time, especially because many of them already know that something like this was potentially going to come forward. So I don't, I don't necessarily have concerns about our ability to execute these agreements.
Okay, the second question, yes, is addressed to the Planning Commission members. Does anyone have any concerns about, well, let me make this a two-part question. Number one, how many of these do you think would, would be appealed? And number two, to the Planning Commission members, does anyone have any concerns about this coming back to the Planning Commission for, for appeal?
Mr. Billy, I don't think I have any concerns about that at this point. I was kind of going back to what Linda said. I think she was talking about historic encroachments. And I thought she said Old Town, maybe she said downtown, because you've mentioned the, the town's plan to approach CBD, business owners with, or property owners with, in some of these encroachments.
Billy, this is Linda, and I meant to say downtown.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, yeah, okay, cool. And I guess I wonder though, for sake of scale, like what about the residential areas in Old Town or whatever? It would seem there's plenty of historic encroachment here, and other parts of town where, where this may turn into more of a numbers issue, and then town staff and the appeal processes could become kind of a bear.
So the Board, this is Miranda, the Board of Trustees did ask us to pull together kind of an estimate of residential and commercial, and that's something that we're actively working on, so I don't have that full number for you yet. There was a desire to start with commercial and then to discuss at a later time addressing this from a residential, but the CBD is the biggest concern at this time of just entering into that agreement, so both parties understand what the expectations are on each side. But when we bring this back to the Board of Trustees, there will be additional data about how many properties residential, commercial, we're looking at.
Okay, that's cool, because it seems like making a decision like this for sake of the CBD is one thing, and make a decision like this for sake of all, all, you know, zoning areas, you know, including the others, commercial districts, and then soon the industrial, which one day will be more of a thing. And then, but more so than all the residential districts. That's where it seems like the scale of it might kind of potentially change the terms.
This is Jim Reese. I wanted to comment on that as well. I don't have any problem with the Planning Commission being the appeal authority if somebody isn't happy with, you know, the town staff decision. But as I read through this, and I, maybe I'm seeking clarification, I thought this was mainly to clearly define responsibility between, you know, who the, who is responsible, you know, if somebody's stairway encroaches onto town right-of-way, and somebody slips down the stairs and breaks their leg on the town right-of-way, this agreement clearly says it's the owner of the property who's going to be responsible for any liability incurred. And so as I was reading this, I thought this was mainly a way to not, not push back on people that have encroachments, but clearly define roles and responsibilities and say, hey, this historic encroachment is here. We're not going to tell you, you got to tear out your stairway and rebuild it. We just want to be sure that the town doesn't get sued if you didn't shovel the ice off your stairs and they slipped down and break their leg in the town right-of-way. That is how I read it, that it was basically something that protects the town. That's all I have. And if somebody would respond to that, I would appreciate it.
You're, you're right, Commissioner Reese. That's exactly what one piece of it is, is to lay out the rights and responsibilities of the different property owners and to specify that if there is an accident on an encroaching piece or an encroaching part, that the adjacent property owner has the responsibility for that accident and liability.
So Jennifer, a follow-up question on that is, as it stands now, what would happen if this person did fall down the stairs and injure themselves on town property?
Well, I mean, it, it's not as clear. So what the encroachment license does is it makes it more clear as to who is responsible. If, if you don't have this in place, then you have two people pointing fingers at each other saying, oh, it's not me. It's the town that's responsible, and the town saying, no, it's not me. It's the adjacent property owner that's responsible.
Okay, yeah, I was trying to get you to say this is a good thing, so.
It is. It is a good thing, yes. And I, I think it's, I think it's good for both the town and the property owner, just to make sure that everything is clear.
Okay, any other comments, Roger, you have?
Yeah. Are we gonna have guidelines and direction for the appeal process to the Planning Commission?
That would be, that's spelled out in the draft ordinance in terms of what you would be able to review. It's in section 11-3B, and it's, it's basically three different criteria as to what you can review, whether the requested encroachment is the minimum encroachment necessary to make possible the reasonable use of that parcel, whether denial of the encroachment would cause the applicant unnecessary hardship or practical difficulty, and whether there are special circumstances or conditions which are unique to the parcel, building, or structure, which are not applicable to other parcels, buildings, or structures.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, so I'm sort of hearing that no one on the Planning Commission really has any heartburn with, with it coming, the appeals process coming before the Planning Commission. This, since this is a discussion item, I guess I'm curious, I guess it goes back to the Board of Trustees, is that correct? Or what are the next steps?
Yes, next steps is that it would be presented back to the Board of Trustees, probably as an action item. And in the discussion with the Board of Trustees, this draft ordinance would be presented to them, and information would be provided that you all reviewed it, the Planning Commission reviewed it, were okay with sitting as the appeal body on these decisions, and didn't have other feedback unless you do.
Yeah, that was my next question out to the Planning Commission members to see if, if anyone had any additional issues or clarification that they would like to see in the ordinance, draft ordinance. I haven't heard really much of anything yet, so I'm assuming that most people are happy with it, but anybody have any input for the ordinance, draft ordinance?
This is Karen. I don't have any input except to say I think it's a good idea to have, you know, this procedure in place. And because we come across these a lot when we're looking at SRUs, so so I'm glad to see it happening, and I think it's, the Planning Commission is the right body to be handling any cases where the applicant wants to re-review the decision.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I wanted to agree with Karen. I think that this is something that helps protect the town. And I wanted to commend Attorney Mattson and the town staff. This is a very well-written document with clearly defined goals and process. I understood it completely.
I understood it completely, and I, I think that this is a good thing for the town overall.
Okay. Well, I think that sort of wraps it up, at least in, in my view. Julian, would you like to say anything further from the BOT perspective?
Uh, no, just that I'm, I'm very pleased that the planning commission is willing to take on this hopefully light burden, but this, this is, is very good to have an appeals process where the body that is handling the appeal is in a very separate department from the body that made the initial decision. So I'm feeling pretty good about it, and I'm very glad that you viewed it. Thank you very much, folks.
Chair Williams, are you going to take public comment because it's a discussion item?
Oh, that's, that's true. That, that's a good point, okay. Yes, let's open it up for a public comment. If anyone has any input or comments or questions at this point, please feel free to give your name and address and, and any comments.
So Kathleen Tifai had actually emailed a comment, which is why I asked. So she says Kathleen Tifai, 30-year resident East Magnolia, 17-year business owner. Consider this agreement on the property titled as an encumbrance and kind of hinders values of their properties. I also question what happens if someone refuses to sign, what does town do? And that's the end of the comment.
Okay. Does someone want to address that question?
I think it's hard to address that question, it's a, probably a case-by-case situation. Depending on what the encroachment is, how long it's been there. So it's hard to know.
So.
I agree, and a question by town staff to definitely highlight that, again, this is beneficial for both parties. And, and helping to just thoroughly explain what the agreements are, spending time with them. I think town staff has a developed relationships with business owners, and so just making sure to explain it in, in its entirety. Now, again, that could always happen, that a business owner refuses to sign, and as Attorney Matson said, I think we handle that case-by-case.
Okay, so that would be handled on the, on the staff first, and then if, would it, would it come to the planning commission at some point if there was refusal to reach agreement?
The, the ordinance doesn't spell out that that would come to the planning commission. Essentially, then it would be a, really a property dispute, and likely that would be something that the Board of Trustees would address.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, that's what I thought. Okay, any other public comment at this point? Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. I guess that concludes this, this discussion items, and we'll move on to informational items. The next one up on the agenda is the 2018 building code update. And let's see, is this, who, Miranda, are you presenting this, or?
It starts with me, and then I'll kind of pass it on to our administrative team. So tonight, we just want to do a quick presentation about the international code adoption that we're recommending for the town of Netherlands. This presentation does focus on the 2018 code. And so I will start us off, and then I'll pass it on to Karen, Cynthia, and Rick. So currently, we've got the 2018 code book that we're looking at adopting. There's a total of 15, and we're either looking at a full adoption or a partial adoption. And the following slides just highlight some of those changes that are in the 2018 code. The first one is that there is a new book specifically dedicated to pools and spas. Before, both those items were incorporated into other code books. But in 2018, they're in their own code book, and so we are recommending adopting that in its entirety. There's also been some changes with regards to how wind is calculated. Netherlands is currently in Climate Zone 7, where the wind speed used to be based on a three-second gust. The wind speed has now changed, though, to an ultimate wind speed. So as you see in this, this map we have here, Netherlands was 130 miles per hour based on the 100-year current, we're now at 140 miles per hour. Excuse me, 144. This slide here shows a 700-year current, where the miles per hour increases to 168. And this last slide here is from Boulder County, which sets us at a wind speed of 175 miles per hour. Safe Built, who is our building official, is recommending that we focus on the 144 miles per hour wind speed for two reasons. First, it's only a slight increase from 130 miles per hour, so it's not cost prohibitive to the builders, because trying to buy building materials for 175 miles per hour can be challenging. So having the increase from 130 to 144 seems the most appropriate. There's also an increase in stud height, before the stud height didn't exceed, exceed 10 feet, which really limited contractors to building those ceilings that they look for. In addition to the height, I think one of the great things about the International Residential Code is that it's really user-friendly. It's easier for homeowners to read and, and just help them to understand the tables, and was really made with the, the contractor and homeowner in mind. As we know, many people in our area prefer to build log homes. So the new code allows log buildings to meet the requirements for the thermal envelope, which will ultimately just make them more energy efficient. We've listed here some appendices. So in the 2018 code, if you adopt the code in its entirety, it doesn't necessarily include the appendices. Those need to be incorporated separately. So currently, town staff are reviewing all the appendices to determine what's appropriate to recommend for adoption. But outlined in this slide are some of the appendices that Safe Built is recommending that we consider. Something that didn't change is accessory structures. So currently, no permit was needed if the structure was under 200 square feet. That's obviously helpful to not have a change, just for consistency between our code years. Currently, town code excludes relocating structures that are less than 120 square feet. Safe Built is recommending that we change that to 200 square feet so that we match the International Building Code and the International Residential Code. On this slide, we're looking at a chart that deals with wall and ceiling insulation. So as you see, there's really only a change in regards to the above-grade wall insulation. So the first number is the interior thermal envelope, and that plus five accounts for the sheer wall. Under the R20, which is common, so R20s are common for 2x6 walls, where R13s are 2x4 walls, which is why you see that second set of numbers, the 13 plus 10, to accommodate both the 2x6 and the 2x4. And these next slides just show what that insulation would look like. So here you see the difference between an R15 to an R49. And really, we're looking at kind of the R20 for most standard walls. And then here, you look at, you can see a picture of continuous versus cavity insulation and the difference between the two. Another minor change is in regards to the window U factor. So as you see, there's no change for skylights, but windows have decreased to .30. The lower the number, the more energy efficient the window is. So that is a step in the right direction. And really, if you look at most windows these days, they're actually at a U factor of .27, which is less than the .3 that's being recommended. And again, lower the number, the more efficient the windows. And then one of the kind of last major changes is in regards to PV systems. They have their own chapter in the International Residential Code. And in Netherlands, we've really seen an increase in the installation of these systems. So it's, it's nice to be, become more familiar with that. Safe Built's electrical inspectors are very familiar and knowledgeable about PV systems and can help our community as we see more of those getting installed. We've been asked lots of questions about energy savings or costs. So from a cost standpoint, we're currently on 2012's code. So by increasing to 2018, it really doesn't change or affect the cost of customers. However, we did identify that Boulder County has stricter energy conservation codes. In essence, they rewrote their entire code and didn't adopt the, the energy code for 2018. So our Sustainability Advisory Board is working on a comparison between the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code and the Boulder County Code to make recommendations on if we need to amend the International Energy Conservation Code. You all might be familiar with our construction and demolition program. It is a program that incentivizes and encourages builders to recycle onsite debris and divert it from local landfills. So deposits are, are paid based on project type and square footage, and then are refundable based on their documented diversion rates. So this has actually been in play for a while, but we just felt like it needed some revitalization. So we're working on changing up some of the documentation, so it explains the program better, and do a little bit of a redesign so that it works with the community, and we can encourage contractors and developers to divert their construction material. So I'm now going to turn it over to Rick Hendrickson, who's going to talk about the fire code changes.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Couple of things with the fire code. First off, primarily, the, the fire code applies to, excuse me, commercial buildings, not residential. There are very few things that apply for small, one- and two-family residential, but very, very minimal. It's almost all really commercial. Going to the 18 code, very few things that affect anybody in the town of Netherlands. Go over a few of the changes here. But most of the big changes in the code apply to much larger, larger buildings than the town would probably ever approve. So just to run through these real quick. New section in Chapter 3, they added basically a section on food trucks, which is good for us because we haven't had any basis to inspect these vehicles when they come up. Now we, we will have that, and I've, already the ones I've seen, some of them are really in good shape and some not so much. This will really help us out. In Chapter 9, in Fire and Alarm Systems, there's an allowance now for water mist fire suppression systems beyond just the traditional sprinkler system. So that's another option for folks. Chapter 11, they added a couple of lines that CO detection is required in daycares and schools. That only applies to a couple of daycares in town, and because all of them predate having to have any kind of built-in alarm system, they can get by with just a plug-in type CO detectors. They don't have to have anything fancy tied into some larger alarm system. The schools, the two big schools are, the elementary school and the middle, senior high school are still under state requirements, which are on the 2015 code. So that wouldn't be required until the state makes an update for them. In Chapter 12, this is a kind of a big one for us, is they took energy systems that were kind of scattered throughout the code. It's everything from battery systems to photovoltaic, and they put it all into one chapter. Makes it a lot easier for everybody from contractors to inspectors to find all the information you need. The other thing, they added a new Chapter 39, which is processing and extraction facilities. This is primarily for marijuana industries. We, and that's for people who are using volatile liquids for extraction. Not aware of any legal ones that are operating in town right now. We know we've had some past issues in residences, but that wouldn't really apply here anyway, because that's not, wouldn't be allowed. The only process, one that I know in town that's going on, uses a non-volatile liquid in their process. But that's a whole new chapter and gives us a, a easy place to go look in one spot if we do get somebody wanting to do that in town. Hey, next slide. So the, the things that we're looking at from the fire department perspective are three things. One is residential fire suppression systems, this is commonly called sprinklers. In the 2012 adoption, the town opted to amend out the sprinkler requirement, because it is part of the residential code. So we've been going without that since then. These systems are life safety, systems primarily, but they usually put the fire out. As we saw on Alpine Drive this summer, that, you know, really did its job exactly as it was supposed to. It put out the fire, it prevented further injury, and prevented damage as well. And we just see the value there on that one call. Second thing is exterior fire resistance and required defensible space. We currently have some requirements in our code, and we would like to make those a little more stringent. Because right now, they're based on some fairly old science, actually. I'd like to bring that up to some current code on that. The third thing I'd like to do is add a new Chapter 40, which is basically storage of distilled spirits for micro distilleries. Right now, in the code, it really addresses large facilities that store these flammable liquids, the, the spirits and wines. This allows a, kind of a mid-level of storage, which makes it easier for somebody who wants to open one of these operations. We have had a couple inquiries about that. And for that chapter, we actually pull it out of the 21 code that's already out and just move that chapter and amend it in. We go to the next slide, we'll go into a little more detail on these. So residential fire sprinkler systems, some fairly recent statistics here on how many fires, how many deaths, you can read that. Residential and firefighter death rates, or resonant and firefighter death rates, much, much lower in homes with fire sprinklers. You can see a huge percentage of the time, sprinklers keep the fire to the room of, room of origin. And there's a really good article there that I attached a link to. You can pull that off, or maybe some of you already have looked at that. And this is pretty important to us, because obviously, this is a life safety issue, and it's also safety for our firefighters. Some of you may know, you know, back in the good old days, 30, 40 years ago, all homes were constructed, you know, big two-by material, you know, all the rafters and joists were all that. Now it's all much lighter-weight stuff, it burns through really quickly in a fire. And that's where the firefighter deaths come from, is that by the time we get there, a lot of the structure is weakened. And even if people have gotten out, when we go in to fight fire with a weakened structure, people, firefighters fall through floors and things like that. So this is definitely something that we would like to see added. So next slide. And we have a short video here, it's not playing well on this, so it's something you can maybe get later, it's only a minute and a half long. Just gets into some of the details on the whys of sprinkler systems for residences. So, yep, next one there. So as far as our wildfire protection, both defensible space and hardening structures, we already have a requirement in town that if your, if your building is within five feet of a property line, you have to meet some pretty stringent or stringent exterior flammability requirements. And that's things like the hardy board, or stucco, or metal, or brick, or something like that. Where ours drops off really quickly is when we get more than five feet away from a property line, those requirements drop off and beyond 20 feet from a property line, there's no requirement. Well, as we've seen in fires over this last couple of years, not, you know, all over the country, but Colorado as well, it's the big ember storms, not direct flame flame contact that's causing fires to spread and burning down houses. So having this exterior hardened, if you will, really makes a big difference. Honestly, though, 70 mile an hour winds, a big fire moving, nothing's going to stop that. Short of, well, nothing you can do to a house is going to stop fires in those conditions. We're looking at the ones in between, the smaller fires where things are creeping around or significantly moving, but without that big wind. These exterior surfaces have just really proved to save a lot of homes in the violent urban interface. So here's just an example of, you know, the green is the good, the red's the not so good. And I think most of the people in town have seen stuff like this before. They know what we're talking about with the fire resistant exteriors. So we can move on. So cost of construction, headwaters economic, did a study on homes. We know it costs a whole lot more than the those top prices here to build a home around here. But this was some average numbers they picked up a couple of years ago. And it was actually saw is that you could actually build a fire resistive home cheaper than some non resistant homes. And biggest difference there was in siding. We've got some comparisons here in a minute, but they're looking at things like the hardy board are cheaper than a lot of the wood products that people are putting on houses traditionally. And this will, this is a way, you can defer some cost there. Granted, other things do cost more. They show the roof costing more, but we already require the Class A roofs in town. So that's going to be a fixed cost regardless of what else you do. So we move on. So I talked to a bunch of builders in town to get these numbers. You know, as they say, your results may vary, but this is kind of some ballpark numbers. Looking at the first column there with siding, you know, basic wood, something that looks okay, about four bucks a square foot. If you go to kind of the cheap kind of pressboard, lap siding down around three. Hardy is also around three. Stucco is about four bucks a square foot. And if you go with stone or something like that, it's 16 and up. So it gets pretty expensive there. Decks, we found some pretty big differences is depending on which contractor I was talking to. And I guess how good their crews are at building decks and how efficient they are. And also depends on the engineering of the deck and how tall it is and things like that. But, you know, a basic wood deck like a lot of people have had traditionally, anymore they're 25 to 30 bucks a square foot put in a deck. If you're looking at something that's ignition resistant with a composite, you know, plastic and wood, the Trex kind of thing, it does meet the fire resistant requirements. You're 30 to 40 bucks a square foot. And if you want, if you want wood and you're looking at, you know, you can get pretty expensive with that E pay. Now you're more like 50 bucks a square foot for that. So if you, if you want the wood, you can still get it, it's just going to cost you more. And we certainly see that around town with most of the houses going in that people are paying more for the things they want to have that are a little nicer. Fire sprinkler systems, you know, the National Fire Protection Association Standard 13D is what most of the systems up here are kind of the low end. If you have a pretty basic house, five to six bucks a square foot up here. And then it goes up from there. We're considerably over the national average for price up here. Part of that's because we have no contractor up here that can install the systems. So they're all coming up from down below. Also because of our climate, almost all these systems have to have antifreeze in them. You can't just go with water. So that's costing you more. Plus, almost all the houses that are, the new ones going in or a good number of them anyway, are pretty complex. Things like big vaulted ceilings that people want, and that costs more to get a system in. You're more likely to have to do antifreeze in a system like that. But again, and that's kind of a, that's kind of an owner's choice. They're deciding that they want to have those nicer features, so they're willing to pay that extra amount for it. Sprinklers are also already required in the county, unincorporated areas. We'd just be getting on the same level with them with this. So next slide. Okay, this is off to somebody else now.
Thanks, Rick. So Cynthia had spent some time looking at affordable housing goals, specifically the ones the Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission have worked on over the last five years. And I'm going to turn it over to her to just do a brief overview of those initiatives.
Thanks, Miranda. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. So we had discussed this at the Planning Commission, and I know as we've had new commissioners coming on to the commission or new board members, what has been done in affordable housing comes up in the discussion as we talk about costs and increasing costs for building and things like that. So I wanted to look at the housing affordability goals that the Planning Commission previously asked. And it was also a good opportunity for all of you commissioners to hear it. Some of you have been on the commission for a number of years and you know this. And others have joined more recently, so it's a, a good opportunity to review that with you. So we, we kicked this off in December 3rd of 2015, it's a public forum on affordable housing. We talked about the definition of affordable housing and considerations and barriers and goals. Wasn't very well attended, but it was good. We got a lot of feedback from that and that drove the Planning Commission work goals. And that mainly came out at the beginning of January, the Planning Commission meeting in 2016. They identified these goals discussed at the commission meeting and included areas and opportunities for the commission to look at and work on. So there were a number of things that actually got passed. I'm not going to go in particular order of how these got passed because some of these discussions started earlier and took a number of years. But one of the first things passed was that administrative review of under four units, provided that all the zoning requirements are met. And so that was formerly, if you wanted to have a duplex or more units, even if you were able to meet all the zoning, you would have to go to a special review. So the Planning Commission considered that option to allow if they had all the zoning, meaning if they can meet the setbacks and the lock coverage and building heights and elements of that, could they just build as a use by right, come to building? And the commission had looked at that, introduced it end of 2016 in December and kicked out an ordinance pretty quickly, February of 2017. That's ordinance 746. So that one got passed. That was a pretty easy attainment of that goal, which was awesome. And we talked about an affordable housing project. Boulder County Housing Authority had presented their initial project there for the tungsten village. They came in 2017 at the beginning. They got an extension from the Board of Trustees the following year so they could continue working forward and work with the community and their concerns and, and other elements. There were flanking right of way vacation requests on both sides of the building. And they also worked with the Calvary Chapel of Netherlands to work with them on rearranging that approved right of way vacation. Instead of east west, it would be north south to help the Calvary Chapel have the existing parking that they've been using for a lot of years. So that went to the Board of Trustees, the Planning Commission, the Board of Trustees, and was passed March 20th of 2018. That's a 26 unit building there. And with Prime Haven, six units, Beaver Creek Apartments that are in three different buildings for a total of 12 units there. And also the Rodeo Drive, which are separate homes, and there's six of them. That brings us up to about 50 affordable housing units that BCHA has provided in the town over time. With that recent 26 unit addition. The accessory dwelling units regulation, that was a longer discussion. Started that out in the beginning of 2017 and there was ongoing discussion. There were a lot of staff changes and other things, but we kind of soldiered on through that. And there was an ordinance adopted in 2018. And then there was a bit of a repealed ordinance there in 2020. But that got us some regulations. We don't have a heck of a lot of applications, but we were interested in doing ADUs. It was nice to get the regulation together for that. Short term rental was a very long discussion. We even had a subcommittee. Chair Cornell was on that, or, excuse me, or Cornell, who he was, Chair Cornell at the time. And we had a long, long discussion on that. Started out the discussion in 2016 and finally got some ordinances there, 2019. And amending the business licensing code for short term rental. And that occupational tax was discussed for many years by the commission. So that was that was adopted. And eliminating barriers to mixed use developments. That was a goal that came up from the Board of Trustees Planning Commission Joint Work Session, October 3rd of 2017. They wanted to follow up on that goal that's included in the comprehensive plan to eliminate barriers for mixed use. The commission really tore this apart, which was great, and looked at that, considered the allowance to allow mixed use as a use by right. However, there were some caveats and they added those as building size and the number of units so that a, a trigger would occur if it was a certain number of units or the building was 8,000 square feet or over. So that was adopted in 2018. We discussed long term rental. That was a earlier decision, start in 2016. Came to the commission meeting. There has been long term rental or rental licensing in the code since, I believe, 1976, but there was no program or enforcement. Discussed it. The Planning Commission made a recommendation of approval there at the end of 2016. And public really reacted pretty strongly on that when we discussed the long term rental. Felt that was an invasion of property rights and didn't really want the town to come and regulate how they did long term rental. Short term rental at the time, there were many less. And so we pat and tried to address the short term rental, but it was a pretty protracted discussion. And then there was some, you know, controversy on that process. But so long term rental, the status of that is that the town did not adopt long term rental regulations. There's been some subsequent follow up discussion at the Board of Trustees, but we haven't picked that one up. There was discussion about financial incentives for affordable housing. That first came up in 2016, introduced in the work plan goals. The town has not adopted incentives. It was initially discussed and we made a lot of progress on that. Although Karen Garrity had noted that there were some other elements of that. And I'm going to let her, her discuss that. But I think that that there is importance to consider whether or not the, you know, the Board of Trustees or the Planning Commission desires to consider financial incentives for affordable housing or if they feel guaranteed, if that's driven by the Board of Trustees for the Planning Commission to seek. But we had not adopted anything, any incentives in that regard. There was also discussion early on about the creation of overlay districts. That started out in 2016. It was introduced in the work plan goals. The town hasn't adopted overlay districts. There was discussion and those overlay districts, Karen had provided additional information to folks asking about overlay districts and what she had seen, and she can address that. Originally, that discussion was, you know, as an example, if you have, if you're in the historical zone and you want to make zoning that's specific to the historical area, and that is an overlay to the regular zoning in the area. So that was one of the other discussion of the work plan goals. But the town has not adopted overlay districts. And that kind of gets us to a lot of the things that the Planning Commission worked on for a number of years. And it's not to say that the Planning Commission solved the affordable housing problem in Netherlands, but certainly worked really hard in discussion for many years to address these elements that came up both through the Board of Trustees and through the discussions at the Planning Commission to how they could work on goals geared toward affordable housing and support those elements. So most of it was worked on and adopted, and there were a few things that weren't. And I'm not sure if those are still feeling like they're outstanding and desire to have more work on. But congratulations in many ways to the Planning Commission for all the work that they did put in on these different items.
Cynthia. In addition to the ordinances that Cynthia looked into, Karen also has identified some housing assistance programs that Netherlands residents may qualify for. And she's just going to briefly touch base on those.
Thanks a lot, Miranda. So one of the concerns that whenever you talk about updating building codes is, you know, what, are there added expenses? And then is, how is this going to impact developers? But, but mostly, how's it going to impact the individual home builder or housing for multifamily and for affordable housing? So the board asked staff to look into what sort of programs are out there to provide assistance? So that's what this slide addresses. In the Division of Housing, which is a part of the Department of Local Affairs, they do provide down payment assistance as well as other funding opportunities for first time home buyers. They also have low interest revolving loan funds for homeowner repairs, modifications and new construction. There's also the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. They are a financial institution. They support first time home buyers and multifamily projects, both with low interest loans. They also have a grant program for down payment assistance. So that's just to bring some awareness to some resources that are out there to assist folks who might be renovating or doing modifications, you know, their, their homeowners, and they could get some assistance.
Thanks, Karen. So March, we've been focusing on public vetting and really trying to get feedback from the community about proposed changes to building code. So as you see here, we did three public charrettes and then we are in the process of meeting with advisory boards and commissions. We did present to the Board of Trustees and they provided some feedback at their March 2nd meeting that they wanted our administrative committee to look at sustainable building materials, home orientation in order to capitalize on passive solar and passive heating and cooling. So in this slide are just some links that we provided the board and wanted to provide the community as well. We have a dedicated webpage for building codes, so we encourage you all to check back there often for updates. You can go to it straight from this link. Or on the right hand side of the main home screen, you'll see the icon, which I have located here. You all are kind of the last of our, our public vetting. So there've been a couple of updates since we started getting feedback. Currently, originally, we had talked about adopting new code to go into effect this year. Given that we really want to let Envision roll out and their action plan be developed, we're actually now recommending that the changes go into effect January 2022. We obviously want to make sure that we're mirroring the goals and objectives identified by the Envision team. All the different groups have talked about energy to affordable housing, more discussion about the fire resistant building material. So we don't want to put forth a building code that doesn't match the Envision plan. So there is kind of an extension to the timeframe. We're also looking into the pros and cons of 2018 versus 2021. Since we are going to push it out to an adoption at the beginning of the, the next year, we're wondering if there is benefit to going to the 2021 code. And so we look to bring back before the Board of Trustees at their April 6th meeting, recommended changes, not only in regards to the timeframe, but also some of our thoughts about 18 versus 21. Regardless of which route we go, we will continue to do public vetting in the fall of 2022 and provide much more thorough information about the changes. And, and as Karen mentioned, really start to dive into the cost. That is a bit concern for everyone and understandably so. So identifying, you know, if we adopt a certain energy code, what does that do to the upfront cost for building?
Hey Miranda, is that supposed to be fall of 2021? If the code supposedly might kick in in January 2022?
Sorry, I, I added that slide earlier this evening. So yes, that's supposed to be fall 2021.
Thanks, Billy.
Thanks.
So really, that's the end of our presentation. So are there questions? So really, that's the end of our presentation. So are there questions for us?
Well, thanks. You have a question?
Well, at this point, I'm glad you guys are looking at twenty twenty-one. If you're, if you're looking at twenty eighteen, I'm, I'm glad you're at least looking at them and comparing it to.
This is Jim Reese. I just was curious if you'd received any, either from Rick or from the town staff, if you'd received any feedback from local contractors about the impact of added fire suppression systems in residential properties? That looked like the, by far, the most expensive increase to getting a new house built. And I just wondered if you'd already received some, some feedback on that and expected some opposition.
Yeah, this is Rick Hendrickson. I, I talked to a number of the builders about that specifically. Most of them are building homes for either spec homes or for people that frankly have money. And looking at a lot of the homes that have gone in just on the outskirts of town that have sprinkler systems in it because the county requires it, and they're not having any issue with those costs. Now, a couple of the, one of the builders in particular that builds mostly small homes, he had more concerns with it because it becomes a higher percentage of price than on a relatively inexpensive home. So that's certainly a concern. Most of them have said, yes, they know it's coming and expect it's the next step. And we're doing what we can to kind of offset that cost. We talked about some changes potentially in the existing town code. Because in residential areas, we can probably go with hydrants a little further apart, so that in some areas like in Big Springs, where our hydrants are quite a distance already, we may not have to require a new home, a new homeowner in there to extend or add a hydrant. So there could be a pretty significant offset for a few lots out there. And we're continuing to look at different ways that we can help to kind of, some of these trade-ups and offsets to help out a home builder.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's a great presentation, very complete, lots of information. So would the, would you like the Planning Commission to, to perhaps forward any comments or recommendations directly to town staff at this point?
Yes, that would be our request, and we'll keep the Planning Commission updated on how we continue to move forward, since, again, we are proposing a delay in the timeline. So if you have any feedback or thoughts, or really areas that you want us to be sure we're looking into and exploring, that's what we're seeking today is just areas of interest. And currently, we've identified that really it's energy, affordable housing, the cost it's going to cost, that's going to be for a new contractor. But if there's anything else that comes to mind, please email it to myself, Cynthia, and Karen, and Rick, if you have to email, otherwise we will loop him in.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Anyone else have any last-minute questions? Okay. Well, let's see, it's a little after ten. Let's, let's move on to our last item, which is the town staff report. And I assume, Chad, you'll be presenting this. You, you have the option of doing a brief summary or go into as much detail as you need.
Well, you know, it is after ten. I do appreciate you all giving us the opportunity to do a report. I will do it pretty quickly, and I will hand it off to Miranda for, her part of it as well. So for staff accolades, this month, we were just calling out, recognizing, honoring some of our employees who have just been with us for a long time, our long-timers. Marshall Johns has been with us for almost nineteen years. He just does such an excellent job of policing and being a great front man for the community. And Dawn Baumhofer with the Community Center, in addition to sort of being, you know, overseeing the Community Center, she also is really critical to our emergency preparedness and response team. She is also a big advocate of the artist and art community, and she's been with us now for over thirteen years. And then our Public Works Manager, Chris Pelletier, just celebrated his tenth year anniversary with us, and I think you all know that he's highly technically skilled. He's been a, a hard worker. He, he works long days. Whether it's late, late-night meetings, or trying to fix a water main break, or bowing roads. And then on top of that, he is really excellent at securing funding. And in just the time I've been here, he's helped secure over two-point-five million dollars. And then I just also gave a shout-out to Cynthia, who has been with us. She's not, she's not at her ten-year mark, but she's the closest next employee to reaching that tenth year. And Eric, who we call E-Man, with the Community Center, he's also been with us for a number of years. So thank you to our long-timers. Their historical knowledge and their commitment to the town is just outstanding. The other thing I wanted you to know is that some of the staff took a Water Rights one-on-one training with our water attorney, and we offered the same thing to our Board of Trustees, and they are interested in, in doing that. So the, we'll make sure the Planning Commission knows about that. So if you wanna attend that meeting and learn more about the town's water rights, you can do that. I will tell you, the town is very well-positioned. We currently have a mix of junior and senior rights at thirty-nine-point-six acre feet. We're able to use annually, which we store in the Barker Reservoir. And we're using between sixteen and seventeen acre feet annually, so that leaves us about twenty-three acre feet that are unused. So again, this positions us very well. But it's nice to learn more about this kind of complex system and where the, the town is at with that. I did attend the Wildfire Summit, the first annual one that was hosted by Congressman Joe Mabuse. And I attached a one-sheet summary so that you can look at that. The COVID information I attached is already out of date. Some of the highlights for this week. We've actually had no fatalities in the county for thirteen days, so we're doing really well that way. There's still only twenty-five residents, I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-five residents in Netherland who have had confirmed cases. We're doing the best in the county. The state did initiate the Dial Three Public Health Order, which actually went into effect today. Basically, it doesn't impact us right now because we're, our county is still in yellow, in, in level yellow. But once we get our metrics to such a place that we can move into less restrictive, green or blue, there will even be less restrictions for the businesses. There's also outdoor, the state is no longer setting limits on personal gathering sizes. They're going to follow the CDC's guidance on personal gatherings. But they still strongly recommend, you know, that you avoid the large groups and, and whatnot. And then for vaccination updates, approximately ninety thousand county residents, and that's about thirty-two percent of the eligible population, have received at least one vaccination. And then I'll just wrap it up with, had a meeting today, this morning, with Boulder County Public Health, and thankfully, the Boulder Community Health Group has contracted to provide and administer vaccines up here in Netherland. So now we are just finalizing clinical dates based on the availability of their staff and vaccines. So that's good news, and I'll keep you, we'll keep you updated on that. The Mountain Community Health Task Force is doing amazing things, and you can read about that. And then as far as community development goes, we're still staying very busy. Our numbers are comparative or higher than last year. And now I'm gonna pass it on to Miranda.
Just have a quick Envision update here. First, I just wanna thank Commissioner Blake Moore and Commissioner Giblin, who are your representatives on Envision. They've done a ton of work. These committees meet weekly. It requires five-plus hours, I think, a week of work, and so we have broken into seven subcommittees, and from there, they're working on their vision, goals, and objectives. So if you're interested, we have made all of those files visible to the public, so this Google Drive is where you will access that. We also continue to update our Envision webpage with information. But really, they're, they're just kind of finalizing what we call a component phase of our strategic plan. And then we will be bringing it before the Planning Commission in April to get your feedback on those goals and objectives they've identified. Envision did ask me and ask myself and the town staff for the list of projects town was working on. So the last document in your packet here are actually all the things that not only town staff are working on, but the boards and commissions as well. And as you can see, it's a pretty substantial list, and, and that's just what we're currently dealing with and not what's, what's coming down the pipeline. So just a big shout-out to all of our teams and everything they're doing. Public Works, I think we all know, is one of the busiest departments, and so we just felt it was good to provide just a quick update of what they're working on, and you can read that in the packet. And that is the end of our report.
All right, great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, anyone have any questions or comments on the report? Okay. If not, is there any other business we need to attend to this evening? Okay. I'm assuming everyone's awake. And then finally, the last, the toughest vote we have tonight is the vote to adjourn. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
I, I know that was gray for the motion. Who was the second?
Linda and I were competing.
People are seconding it?
I think seven of us.
Who was, who was the person who spoke? I heard a, a woman's voice.
That was me then, Karen.
Okay, I gotcha.
It was the race.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, everybody. Good job.
All in favor?
Meeting is adjourned. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Meeting is adjourned at ten, ten-twenty PM.
Thank you. Let's take care.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks for all your hard work, town staff. I know this was a big
Cynthia, do you wanna stop the recording?
Sure.
Or you can jump off. I'll just wait.